One, two, three, four, five. Okay, here we go.
The Tuesday, January 21st meeting of the Albany City Council will please come to order. Pledge of Allegiance. Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country. To the citizens of this country. To the people of this country.
One, two, three, four, five. Okay, here we go. The Tuesday, January 21st meeting of the Albany City Council will please come to order. Pledge of Allegiance. Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, with the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call.
Councilmember Atkinson?
Present.
Councilmember Barnes?
Present.
Councilmember Moss?
Here.
Vice Mayor Wild?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Here. Next item.
Report on action taken in closed session.
The council met in closed session for the purpose of labor negotiations pursuant to Government Code Section 59457.6 and gave directions to the consultant. The council also met in closed session for a purpose of conference with legal counsel to discuss existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.91, Cody et al. versus City of Albany et al., and that was an informational item. Council also met for the purpose of conference with legal counsel to discuss existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9C, and that was also for information. Next item, please.
Consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. By approval of the consent calendar, the staff recommendations will be adopted unless otherwise modified by the city council. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member or a member of the audience requests removal of the items.
Is there any item a member of the council would like to have removed from the consent calendar?
Well, a question. On my iPad here, I'm not seeing the minutes that were approving from December 16th. Does that come up somewhere? For some reason, it doesn't come up on...
They're not just if you click on the icon for the minutes, or actually if you go to the attachments on the right?
There's no attachment on the right on what I have, and there's nothing shows up. Well, you can click on it, and there's nothing to then click on again. Maybe this is my electronic incompetence. I don't know.
Yeah, here's a paper copy. You can use mine. So we'll let you...
Well, I feel uncomfortable about voting on something I haven't had a chance to vote on.
So we'll pull the minutes of December 16th.
Yeah.
Which is 4-1.
4-1, yes.
Okay, so you can have this to give you... Is there any item a member of the public would like to remove from the consent calendar? All right, seeing no one, then we'll come back to council and...
I move approval of the consent calendar except for item 4-1.
Second.
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Wild, seconded by Councilmember Atkinson, that we approve the consent calendar with the exception of 4-1. Will you please poll the council?
Councilmember Atkinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Barnes?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wild?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Aye, and the motion carries. Now, would you like to make a motion to move the minutes to the next meeting?
I could do that. I'd like to make a motion to move the minutes for December 16th to our next meeting, and hopefully we'll have a chance to take a look at them.
I second it.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Moss, seconded by Vice Mayor Wild, that the minutes be on the agenda of the next meeting, and those are the minutes of December 16, 2013. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next item, please.
Presentation. Proclamation and celebration of the Albany Library's centennial.
Okay. You're gonna... Well, I saw all these familiar faces. These are all people who've worked exceedingly hard for a very long time, which is why we have this celebration, because such dedication by these people and others. But this is a real core group, so I just want you all to be recognized. And you can't if you're against the wall, so you have to come out here. Why don't you guys just move up, move up, move up, so I'm not looking back at you. Keep going. There you go. There you go. All right, okay. Now I can talk to you. All right. Proclamation and celebration of the Albany Library's centennial. Whereas on April 12, 1909, legislature of the state of California passed a law permitting the board of supervisors of a county to establish a county library system. And whereas the Alameda County Library System was established in 1910 and is governed by the Alameda County Board of Supervisors. And whereas the Albany Library started as a takeout branch in a small room located on the south side of Solano. And whereas on December 4, 1913, under the librarianship of Mrs. Edith S. Hamilton, Albany Library opened in a one-story storefront building shared with Albany City Hall, with a second story added on March 21, 1934, to house the library. And whereas on December 8, 1952, the library relocated to the 1216 Solano Avenue, largely due to the dedication of Albany citizen Rosemary Payne, vice president of Albany Library Board. And whereas in 1969, the Friends of Albany Library was founded and flourished due to the commitment of Mary and Bill Hartung and other dedicated community volunteers. The first book sale was held on the patio of the library and raised $200 for the library. The Friends of the Library continue to thrive and support the library with an annual operating budget of over $70,000. And whereas on January 24, 1994, the library was relocated to 1247 Marin Avenue on the former site of the Albany Hospital. And whereas following the relocation of the library to Marin Avenue, the Albany City Council established the City of Albany Library Board, excuse me, to advise the city council on matters relating to Albany Library. And whereas the library now serves the 18,000 residents of Albany, as well as the nearby communities of Berkeley, Oakland, and El Cerrito. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City of Albany hereby celebrates the Albany Library's centennial and encourages the community to take part in the Albany Library's centennial festivities scheduled for January 16, 2014. I mean, just thank you. Thank you. January 26, 2014, from 2:00 to 3:30 p.m. following the Historical Society's annual meeting in the Albany Community Center, 1249 Marin Avenue by the Albany Historical Society in partnership with Friends of Albany Library, City of Albany, and the Alameda County Library. And some of us remember Solano Avenue and the great work being done in very small quarters, and how even though we've expanded to huge facilities, the quality of service to individual peoples has always been superb, and we thank you so much.
But, you know, it was the people of Albany in 1913 that wanted a library, and has wanted one since and has supported it. And that, to me, is the amazing thing about this 100 years, is that there has, you know, very early in the formation of the city, we had to have a library, and that library has been incredibly well-supported through the Friends of the Library, the Library Board, the tax measures. So it's a real pride, and the city council. So it's a real source of pride for all of us that this town has cared so much about education and libraries.
Just to reiterate what Ronnie said, but also to say that, and I know that Ronnie's been very humble in all of this, but she has actually served a little less than one-third of those years. And so I think it's quite an amazing professional accomplishment. She is very humbled by that fact, but to me, to stand on the shoulders of the giant, as little as she is, has been exceptional in her... And we're also, our lineage with Edith Hamilton, who used to hand-check and make sure everybody had clean hands before they touched all of the books. So we have quite a lineage of librarians that we rest upon. So, thank you all, and I hope to see you Sunday on the 26th. It's going to be a big party and a reunion for many. So, thank you, and thank you so much, the City of Albany. We really appreciate what you've done for us today.
Yeah, you may as well. Next item, please.
Proclamation supporting the Albany Relay for Life event, May 17 through 18, 2014.
We have another civic event that's very important, deals with the health of family members and friends of all of us. City of Albany proclamation supporting the Albany Relay for Life, May 17, 18, 2014. Got that one right. Whereas for the past three years, the Albany community has joined together in the American Cancer Society's Albany Relay for Life to support and celebrate the lives of persons affected by cancer, to increase awareness about prevention, and to raise funds for research, services, education, and advocacy to eliminate cancer. And whereas the 2014 Albany Relay for Life will take place from 9:00 a.m. Saturday, May 17, to 9:00 a.m. Sunday, May 18, at Cougar Field behind Albany Middle School. And whereas the Albany Relay for Life is a community event that brings residents and members of Albany organizations, schools, and businesses together for a common cause. And whereas participants are invited to walk, run, or stroll around Cougar Field Track, enjoy entertainment, sponsor or visit booths, celebrate the lives of survivors and caregivers, and honor and remember those who have had cancer during the moving luminaria ceremony at dusk. And whereas the City of Albany employees team has been an active participant in the Albany Relay for Life for the last two years, and is once again this year. And whereas no disease impacts more lives of members of the community and city staff than cancer, now therefore be it proclaimed that the City of Albany hereby supports the Albany Relay for Life on May 17, 18, 2014. And be it further proclaimed that the Albany City Council urges Albany residents, organizations, schools, and businesspeople to honor the lives of those impacted by cancer by participating in the 2014 Albany Relay for Life. And obtain more information at the website, www-relayforlife.org, Albany, California, or from event sponsors. Thank you for doing this. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor Thompson, and members of the council for supporting our event. I'd like to let you know that last year, the Albany Relay netted just under $20,000 for the Relay for Life for the American Cancer Society. I'd like to invite you all to our relay kickoff, which is next Monday, January 27, from 5:30 to 7:30 at Mechanics Bank, 801 San Pablo. And I also urge all of you to join the City of Albany team, and any of you to join another team or form a team to help us support the fight. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have...
Next item, please.
Presentation by Gary Wolf, Stop Waste Executive Director regarding proposed county household hazardous waste fee on residential properties.
Staff, please.
Good evening. Household hazardous waste materials such as pesticides, paints, and cleaners are not allowed in curbside carts and require careful disposal by a certified facility. Albany residents may drop off these materials for free at any of the four Alameda County household hazardous waste facilities, the closest of which is on 7th Street in Oakland. The program revenues are declining, and Stop Waste has proposed an ordinance that will establish an annual fee of $9.55 per household to achieve, to expand the program and achieve higher participation rates. The proposed fee will also provide 12 one-day neighborhood drop-off events held throughout the county. It's important for one of these events to be in Albany because Albany participation has been historically below average. And it's also important to note that Albany residents already pay for curbside disposal of some hazardous materials through their garbage rates. I'd like to introduce Stop Waste Executive Director Gary Wolf, who is here to present more information on the proposed fee.
Thank you for inviting me to present this evening. This is the short version of a much longer presentation than we did in community meetings in October of last year. I was asked by Mr. Moss to be sure to come in and do this presentation for the council and for the community. I did this roughly the same presentation in December for our governing board. So the full presentation, if you want to see the whole story and better pictures of the household hazardous waste system and how it operates and so forth, is available at this website location. There's a streaming video there. So household hazardous waste is simply hazardous waste generated by residents in the course of living in and maintaining their place of residence. And here's a picture of the many types of things that are involved. With the exception perhaps of ammunition, we would find all of these things in almost all of our homes. The household hazardous waste system has been in operation since the early 1990s, and participation, which is the blue line, has steadily gone up over that time period, over the 20-year time period. We're currently serving around 45,000 households a year. But the system is funded by a $2.15 per ton fee collected at the landfills, and as the tonnage of the landfills has declined, which all of us in this county are working eagerly to do, to achieve, and to continue to drive down, the revenue has declined as well. So the system has been spending more money than it takes in for the last two or three years, which we've known about, but there was a trust fund accumulation, and we felt it was best to spend that money down before asking the community to pay anything more. So at this point, we need to either implement a new fee to provide additional funding, or cut back to an austerity option. If you were to follow the historical line upward...
Here. You could, in concept, serve historical growth without going up to the full expansion option that we've shown. But the reason we've done that full expansion option is that basically a third crew needs to be hired to operate the system at the historical trend line. And once the third crew's been hired, you may as well get as many people to use the facility as possible to spread your fixed costs out over as many households as possible. So the expansion option goes a little bit above the historical trend line in order to get the lowest cost per household served. It's the most economically efficient way to expand the system. This is a summary of what happens to services under austerity in the proposal. Basically, the facility that is closest here to Albany and Oakland would be open on seven hours on Saturday rather than four hours as now. It would be open on Thursday and Friday for five and a half hours. Now it's currently open only four hours. And it'll be open on Wednesday for five and a half hours. Now it's not open at all on Wednesday. So it'd be much more convenient for people to use the facility. Also, as Claire mentioned, there will be 12 one-day drop-off events per year that would be brought to neighborhoods around the county that are a little further away from the drop-off centers, to bring the drop-off closer to people, make it more convenient, and to remind them that the permanent facilities exist, and they're not that far away, and they can be used pretty quickly. It typically takes two to three minutes to unload at one of the permanent facilities. So most of the energy and time involved is to drive there and drive home. It doesn't take long at the facility. We'll also enhance our outreach to equalize higher participation. Since people are being asked to pay equally for this service, we want to be sure that there's equal participation across the county in different zip codes. That hasn't been done in the past outreach, and no one had thought to fine-tune it that much. We will in the future. We also include outreach at point of purchase for upstream solutions. And what we mean by that is, in the long run, handling this stuff at end of life is very expensive. What we would really like to do, in the long run, is get the manufacturers to include in the price of the product, the cost of handling the product at end of life. That's already beginning to be done with paint products and a few other things. And that way, those costs don't need to be burdened onto fee payers. Instead, they're included in the price of the product when purchased. So in the long run, through these upstream solutions, reaching out at point of purchase and talking to people about buy what you need, use what you buy, give the access to other people who need it, and politically support getting manufacturers to include it in the price of the product, we hope that in 10 years, we won't need to fund the system at the same level anymore. Which leads to talking about the fee. It's $9.55 per residential unit per year maximum. I'll explain what I mean by maximum in a minute. Collected through the property tax rule in most cases. Does not increase with inflation or costs or for any other reason. It automatically goes down if revenue or cost offsets by other sources, for example, this paint care program being run by paint manufacturers, are higher than listed in the independent review that we did. So if we get more revenue from paint care, the $9.55 will automatically go down. If the revenue from the $2.15 per ton at the landfill is higher than projected in that report, automatically the fee will go down. The fee ends on 6/30/2024. It's got a 10-year sunset, and we're hoping that by that point in time, we won't have to ask for a renewal, because these upstream solutions will have been put in place legislatively. And residential rental property owners would be able to use the facilities at no charge. Right now, they have to pay to use them as small businesses. That'll be waived if this fee is adopted.
That'll be waived if this fee is adopted. The summary of the rationale is if we don't take action, illegal dumping and associated expenses and harms will occur. We want to accommodate the historic pattern of growth in use. Otherwise, we'd have to start rationing the service at some point. We want to increase the convenience of use, as I've talked about already. Most efficient use of staff and facilities, as I mentioned. More equitable use of facilities and services geographically, as I had mentioned. We would capture more than half of the total household hazardous waste tons. But the point-of-purchase outreach and technical assistance in support of long-stream upstream solutions is really important because capturing more than half still isn't capturing all. And to capture all, we'd need twice as high a fee. And so that's not our strategy in the long run. We simply want to extend the support of the system for another ten years, bring it closer to people, help people to understand more what's going on. But in the long run, have an upstream solution, not just constantly collecting this stuff at end-of-life where it's very expensive. The decision process. Our board has scheduled a fee ordinance and a fee collection report resolution for consideration of adoption on February twenty-sixth. We have mailed, at this point, notification letters to all residential property owners in the county, and other outreach is underway. So everyone who's a residential property owner, I hope you've received the notice in the mail by now. You should have. On the outside of the envelope should have stated in bold letters, as mine did, important information about a proposed household hazardous waste fee in this envelope. So it's pretty hard to miss the envelope. If adopted, it'll be included in the property tax rule bill sent out next fall, and it's twenty fourteen, and the new services will begin on January one twenty fifteen. And with that, I'm happy to take questions. I have some other slides that might be relevant for any particular questions.
Questions or comments from council?
Well, I have a question, which I think I proposed to you at the last board meeting. There are twelve proposed dates around the county for drop-off sites to be spread around. What's the chance of Albany getting one of those?
Right. Well, the twelve will not always be the same twelve locations every year.
Right.
So we'll start out with twelve locations that are safe and secure and are located in areas that are less served. And North County, on a percentage basis, is underserved compared to some other parts of the county. So we'll certainly have a significant number of the twelve in North County. As to whether it'd be specifically located in Albany, I don't know what the physical opportunities are for doing that. We have to have a parking lot large enough to handle five hundred households driving in and through during the day, with it all, you know, partitioned off, no one else has access to it, and that a vendor can handle those people. So if there is such a location in Albany, it would certainly be a good candidate. We do have seventeen member agencies. I've asked by not quite seventeen of them, but most, what do we do to have at least one of these in our community? And the answer is always the same, that we're going to locate them in locations that bring up service to those who are less well-served. So right now, North County would certainly be a leading area for that, but over time, we may have to move them to other locations to fulfill the promises we're making to the public.
In the long run, I certainly support this idea of upstreaming the costs. So it comes with, when you buy the product, you're paying for the disposal of the product. But that also seems to me to take statewide, if not federal, participation. What do you think of the idea that if Albany were to possibly contribute part of the cost, that we have maybe a one-thema drop-off place somewhere in Albany? We have a new maintenance center that we're working on getting together. It seems to me that would help in our participation rate, which I understand is relatively -- is lower than it could be.
Yeah, we'd be happy to do more than twelve of these drop-off events around the county, and any sort of cost-sharing that other, you know, the member agencies or other organizations are willing to offer would then stretch the number that could be done. So there is a drop-off like this that's done in Dublin already. If that were to be continued, they might cost-share and allow us to do a thirteenth. San Leandro already brought up the issue of cost-sharing to maybe help extend, so there could be some additional ones. I live in Castro Valley. There is a drop-off there that does not handle all household hazardous wastes, but still there is a certain amount of money built into the CV-SAN budget for that drop-off, and it could be expanded to cover all household hazardous waste with some cost-sharing, and then perhaps get us up to, you know, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen of these events. So certainly with cost-sharing, we could maybe get more events and maybe get it up to seventeen and have one, at least one in every community every year, but that remains to be seen.
I'm just looking here at the chart that was in the agenda. Five-three B alternative disposal options. It goes through paints, e-waste medications. Then there's something called sharps.
Yes.
What are sharps?
Sharps are needles.
Syringes.
Syringes.
Oh.
Yeah. Hypodermic needles.
Okay. Also, I take it this chart is current level of services?
Well, I'm not certain.
Anybody know?
I put the chart together, but yes.
So actually, we get quite a few services from the El Cerrito Cycling Center, it looks like currently, except for paint thinners, cleaners and sprays, and pesticides, and fertilizers. And just about everything else, we can drop off already. But I think this is a great idea.
Yeah.
As a homeowner, I'd be perfectly happy to pay ten dollars to have better drop-off. I have a shed full of old paint cans that are just waiting for you. Go for it.
Well, and we'll be happy to take them. It's our job. There are chemists on-site at the county facilities. They sort things into thirty-five different categories. And so I'm not looking at the chart there. I'm not certain that actually everything that they're able to take can be taken to El Cerrito, except for the list that you made, but I could look into that. But the HHW facilities, there's now the four in our county, can take essentially anything. They can take ammunition. They can't take bombs over a certain size. They have to call the bomb squad. There are very few limitations, but, you know, they take DDT, they take all sorts of, you know, banned substances, and so forth.
Yeah, I think this is really important, what you're proposing for us, and I appreciate your taking the time to come here. And I just walk around my own neighborhood, I just see so many paint cans that people are putting into trash rather than taking the hazardous waste, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much for coming. Next item, please.
Good at the City Public Forum announcements, for persons designed to address the City Council on an item that's not on the agenda, please note that City policy limits each speaker up to three minutes. The mayor may reduce the time limit per speaker depending on the number of speakers. The Brown Act limits the council's ability to take in or discuss items that are not on the agenda. Therefore, such items are normally referred to staff for comments or future agenda. If you would like to speak, there's a speaker card in the back of the room. Please pull one out.
Okay. So if you have an item that you would like to address which is not on the agenda, please get your speaker card and start over here, and then we'll -- let's start. Looks like Francesco, you might be first, because I think Paul left.
Francesco Papalea, Albany resident. My -- I'd like to address the overall program that we have for the -- for the bulb, including the shelter and follow-up care that we have on this. I know that there's an item on the agenda that's specific to just one aspect of it.
Can I ask you not to overlap, please?
All right, I won't.
Okay.
So that -- the idea is, I see this issue as the city has put together a multi-sided aspect to try to meet this problem. And I think they've covered all the bases for what needed to be done, or almost all the bases, at least on paper. But the problem is that it doesn't quite fit the problem. So there's a -- I feel there's a disconnect between how the different things, the shelter, the Berkeley Food and Housing Project, and the outreach, all work together or don't work together. And I'm not sure how the best way of doing that, but I think we can do a better way. I was very impressed by the previous speaker's presentation that included graphs and information that showed very clear ways of measuring how this job that he was trying to do was met. And I don't see the city having this kind of overall way of presenting and measuring the success and progress that we're making. And without that, we're kind of doing it piecemeal. And so that's one of the things I would like us in the future, if we had these items on the agenda, is to have the whole thing at once or have more information so that we can get the information in the package of what's provided. Because I think the success of the program, which I'm -- I believe we all, both sides, all sides want it to be successful, is -- would be more successful if we had a very well-coordinated and measurable approach to the problem. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have Paul Curry, Catherine Sutton, and Amber Whitson.
Good evening, everybody. Although I'm a member of Social and Economic Justice Commission, tonight I'm speaking for myself. But we did have a discussion at our last meeting. One of our concerns is, we've created a facility out at the bulb, but it's being underused. And we would like the council and, you know, in the future, as you move along, to consider how we can better use the facilities. For example, couldn't the showers be used more than just by the people who are actually inside the building? Or couldn't the showers be used for homeless people who are -- live around the city and not just out of the bulb? And couldn't the showers be used for a longer period of time rather than just about one hour a day or whatever? So I'd like you to really consider, we have a facility, we spent thirty thousand dollars on it, and it would certainly make a lot of sense to make more use of it. Thank you.
Hello, Catherine Sutton, Albany resident and member of Transition Albany. So I want to congratulate the library for lasting so long, and take this opportunity to announce that on Monday, a very small library will be starting in the very small quarters of the back room of Albany Arts Gallery. It's the Transition Albany Library, which has over two hundred donated books and DVDs on the many ways we can meet the challenges that faces today, including a lot of how-to books that Albany Library no longer has room for. So this -- we really have a lot of very good DVDs, and this is happening at six PM on Monday at Albany Arts Gallery. And there will be food and company, and you can take a look, and you can join the library. Thank you.
Do you want to give the address?
Yes. I don't know the number, but it's on Solano Avenue at Masonic.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Amber Whitson, Albany resident. I lived on the streets for eight years before I moved to Albany. When Albany police first told my partner and I that we could stay on the Albany bulb as long as we'd like, it was a dream come true. Within two years of moving to the bulb, I felt my life was stable enough that I built up the confidence to go to traffic court and took care of the seven warrants that I had when we first moved to here. All my warrants were for homeless tickets. For over seven years, any errands that I ran or other activities that I'd left the house to accomplish were officially done when I got home. It's the most incredible feeling. When Albany ordered police to cease enforcement of the camping ordinance, shortly after they passed it in ninety-nine, they essentially gave people who had virtually nothing, something. Not just something, they gave us home. The city council and city manager essentially used the police to do their dirty work. With Albany's poorest inhabitants living on the bulb, the city administration was free to not set up services for zone sites to house, or pretty much even acknowledge the existence of a fluctuating number of people who have been living in Albany at the very bottom of the level below the poverty line, namely, the homeless. As such, the only Albany citizens or staff who've had regular contact with the bulb-dwelling community are the officers of the APD. Their orders to not enforce AMC eight dash four on people who took up residence on the Albany bulb who otherwise had nowhere else to live, meant that they essentially told police to let us have homes by telling us that it was okay to stay where we had made homes for ourselves. Now, for police to enforce the law, they have to kick us out of the homes that they were told to give us. I am not the only bulb resident who feels that the officers of the Albany Police Department are generally remarkably respectful in their interactions with us. The city's policy allowing us -- has enabled police to treat us, for the most part, like the residents of any other neighborhood in Albany. They patrol on a daily basis, they have for years. If they hear or see someone who needs assistance, they stop. They know us all by name, and we even know a few of theirs. When some of us see them, we smile and wave, and most of them wave back. If we call them for assistance, they respond. They actually know us as Albany residents, whom, like the rest of the residents of Albany, they are paid to protect and serve. Contiguous Albany has roughly eighteen thousand five hundred residents, most of whom don't know any of us bulb residents at all. They don't know what struggles we've been through individually in our lives, both before we came to Albany and since we've been living here. Albany has a little over two dozen police officers, at least half of whom have had contact with, and in some cases helped, many to most of the Albany residents who live out on the bulb. The men and women of the Albany Police Department see us as people and as human beings. The city council's decision to kick us out of our homes and back onto the streets has to suck for the officers of the Albany Police Department on a human level. In these difficult financial times, it must be horrible to be a public servant whose orders are to take away that which you have given the neediest citizens, to keep the job that was given to you partially by some of the wealthiest.
Thank you.
Peggy McQuaid and Carol O'Keefe.
Good evening, council. I'm Peggy McQuaid. And I'm here tonight to invite you to the Albany Education Foundation, Albany Community Foundation Benefit Chocolate and Champagne. And it's on February first from seven thirty to ten thirty. I know a lot of you have already purchased your tickets, and some of you have made donations to our wonderful silent auction. But I hope that you're all able to come, and I hope the community's able to come. There are amazing chocolates at this event, and if you don't like chocolate, can imagine. There also are savory treats, cheeses, crackers, champagne, craft beer, wine, and just an amazing silent auction with over a hundred items and still growing. Tickets are thirty dollars. There are a lot of us here that would be happy to sell you tickets. So I hope to see you all on February first. Thank you.
Good evening, council. I'm Carol O'Keefe, an Albany resident. As a warm-up for Chocolate and Champagne, I want to invite you and the rest of the community to a discussion about housing in Albany. This discussion is sponsored by a group called the Diverse Housing Working Group, and we are inviting anybody who's interested in the topic of housing in Albany to join us at seven fifteen until nine o'clock, a week from tonight, Tuesday, the twenty-eighth of January, at St. Albans Church, which is located at fifteen oh one Washington. Some of the general questions we'll try to address are, what's a housing element? What types of housing does Albany need? Where should housing be located? What about the impact on the schools? Who pays for it? So we hope you can join us. There are several of these egg yolk yellow flyers at the back for anybody who's interested. And see me or Peggy McQuaid later if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
Hello, Alan Eckert, Albany resident. I know it's close to another issue on the agenda, but I actually want to talk about section eight dash four point two A definition of outdoor space and et cetera for camping. I'm a little upset.
Wait a minute. You can only address items not on the agenda.
Right. On the agenda is eight dash four point four. So it's slight technically different, but I was told today that it was a decision by somebody to not enforce the camping laws again this Friday night, Saturday, when there are people obviously camping on the streets. And I was told by a lieutenant that it was because it was not technically one of the open spaces that is within the law. So since we're looking at the words loiter, and I forget the other one off the top of my head right now, I think we should really define what outdoor space means, and I think that it should involve no camping on the sidewalks either, because the police were told by somebody, I don't know who, that it was up to them to make the decision. were told by somebody, I don't know who, that it was up to them to make the decision not to enforce the law, yet again, which is what got us into the bulb situation in the first place by not enforcing the camping laws as they're written in the code. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Is there anyone else who wants to address the council on an item not on the agenda? Okay, would you please hand your card? Thank you.
I would like to address the same issue, and I was one of the campers out on the streets. And as far as being there was to demonstrate that if folks are kicked off the bulb, they will have to go somewhere, and they will end up on the streets such as Solano. So it was just to, it was a one-time event to basically get the city council and others to start thinking about, is the bulb really a bad place to be? Would something like a Dignity Village, that Portland, which started as a campground, but it's now a self-governing homeless community, be more functional than what is currently being proposed? And maybe we need to open up the discussion and include more folks to come up with more creative solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to address the council on an item not on the agenda? Seeing no one. Next item, please.
Public hearing ordinance number 2014-02, amendments to the Planning and Zoning Chapter of the Municipal Code to: 1. Allow transitional and supportive housing by rights in residential and mixed-use zoning districts; 2. Allow emergency shelter facilities by right in the commercial mixed-use and San Pablo Commercial Zone; 3. Allow emergency shelters with a conditional use permit in Solano Commercial and R-3 High Density Residential Zoning District; and 4. Amend related definitions of land use, parking requirements, physical characteristics, and distance between emergency shelters. Planning and zoning commission recommendation that the council introduce for first reading ordinance number 2014-02 amendments to the Planning and Zoning Chapter of the Municipal Code to: 1. Allow transitional and supportive housing by residential and mixed-use zoning district; 2. Allow emergency shelter facilities by rights in the commercial mixed-use and San Pablo Commercial Zone; 3. Allow emergency shelters with a conditional use permit in Solano Commercial and R-3 High Density Residential Zoning District; and 4. Amend related definitions of land use, park requirements, physical characteristics, and distance between emergency shelters. Staff recommendation that the city council: 1. Introduce for first reading ordinance number 2014-02 amendments to the Planning and Zoning Chapters of the Municipal Code to: 1. Allow transitional and supportive housing by right in residential and mixed-use zoning district; 2. Allow emergency shelter facilities by right in the commercial mixed-use and San Pablo Commercial Zone; and 3. Amend related definitions of land use, parking requirements, physical characteristics, and distance between emergency shelters. 2. Direct staff to evaluate the commission recommendation to allow emergency shelters with a conditional use permit in Solano Commercial and R-3 High Density Residential Zoning District in the upcoming preparation of the 2015 to 2023 housing element.
Staff, would you please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. Currently, the city's planning and zoning code allows emergency shelters in San Pablo Commercial Zoning District, subject to the Planning and Zoning Commission's approval of a conditional use permit. This conditional use permit allows the city to review the application, if it's either in an existing building or in a new building to be constructed, to make sure that it does not potentially affect nearby land uses. It's part of the city's review. Notices are sent to nearby owners and property owners and occupants, and typically, conditions of approval are prepared to address potential issues. Under state law, however, the city is required to eliminate this step, this use permit step, in at least one of the city's zoning districts. The city is, however, permitted to apply objective standards that would regulate the number of beds, size and location of client intake areas, onsite management, proximity to other shelters, length of stay, security, and so forth. In the event that a new emergency shelter involves new construction, with or without a use permit, the city's design review process still applies, and public noticing would be applicable in that case. The Planning and Zoning Commission first discussed the state law at its October 9th, 2013, hearing. In that discussion, the commission reached a consensus to allow emergency shelter housing by right in the commercial mixed-use zoning district. It's the district that is highlighted in the left-hand portion of the screen, basically Cleveland Avenue, East Shore Highway. The draft housing element that has been reviewed by the State Housing Community Development Department includes policies and programs to make that recommendation and to update the zoning code. At the commission's December meeting to discuss this recommendation in more detail, the commission offered additional recommendations, including allowing shelters in the Solano Commercial, the R-3, which is kind of the medium-density zoning district, as well as allowing the shelters in the San Pablo district where they're allowed now, but allowing them without the use permit. The recommendation before you this evening is to allow the shelters in the commercial mixed-use district that I've highlighted, and also the San Pablo Commercial district, which is shown on the screen in the middle of the zoning map. And take a phased approach for the other areas. This is the Solano Commercial Zoning District, and then the R-3 Zoning District. There are several different R-3 zoning districts. So we would recommend that the R-3 and the Solano Commercial Zoning District proposals be analyzed further as a part of the preparation of the 2015 through 2023 housing element, which will begin later this year. This phased approach allows for more public outreach than we were able to do for the commission's December meeting, and further consideration of some of the detailed issues that might come up in those districts. I'd note that for the council, we did receive some correspondence this afternoon from the Public Interest Law Project, which I believe is on the dais. And you also received the email. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions from council?
One small question. I noticed there's a difference in the recommendation for the Residential Hill District in terms of requiring a conditional use permit versus other districts for the, I believe, for the transitional and shelters. Did I read that correctly? I'm wondering why they would require a conditional use permit where others would not.
What we're trying to do with the transitional supportive housing is to replicate what would normally be required for a, essentially a multifamily, construction in that zoning district. So yeah, we do have a use permit for the, what we call the R-4 zoning district. I believe that's what you're referring to?
Yeah.
And, but it is permitted in all of the other zoning districts without that conditional use permit.
Okay, so you were just duplicating?
We're trying to just blend it in with our normal process for a normal project that we would expect to have.
Okay, Mr. Pond, could you let us know, refresh us on what a first reading is and what a second reading is?
I'll take the first shot at it. Maybe the city attorney can polish it up a little bit. But basically, the council has to review a proposed ordinance twice. This is the first reading. You would vote on this this evening, and if you were to vote in support of the ordinance, we would bring it back to you for a second reading. And there may be some refinements that you want to make, that you want to see the final language. You may get some public comment, something like that. So the two readings provide an opportunity for that fine-tuning, as well as obviously some greater public input. Normally, the second reading is on your consent calendar unless something, unless you call it off or someone else calls it off, or there's a particular issue that comes up between the, and then after the council, if the council were to approve both the readings or the ordinance, it becomes effective 30 days after the second reading. Did I pass the law, Sam?
Craig signs off on that.
You'll be getting your license to practice law in the mail.
Okay. So just for clarification, part of what we're doing here is pro forma. We have to change our ordinances to conform to state law. And that, for the most part, refers to the stuff we have to change to conform to state laws, CMX and San Pablo Corridor.
You have to do at least one of them. We're recommending, the staff recommendation is to do two of them right away so that we're in compliance, and that if an opportunity comes up for a shelter in the near future, we've got a place to put it that doesn't require a use permit. We can do one today with a use permit, but to be able to do one without a use permit. And then broaden, to explore and discuss broadening the areas in the city where you can do it in the future.
So we could conceivably put a shelter in CMX and the San Pablo Corridor, both. Nothing would prevent us from doing that. So and basically then for the R-3 zones and the Solano Corridor, we're just going to throw that in the hopper with the other discussions for the general plan update. That's a fair summary?
Yes.
Okay.
So basically, the ones we want to handle now are the ones that we really want to put into effect immediately. Then the others, I think you're asking us to give you time for more research.
Yes, and research and public input. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right. Public hearing is open. If you would like to speak, please give your card to the clerk. And let me see how many people wish to speak on this issue. Okay, all right, so we'll leave it at three minutes. And then if you will move to the side, because that will facilitate process.
Tony Sustak, Naomi Young, Amber Whitson, Catherine Sutton, Edward Bennett, and Lisa
Okay, would you start, please?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, and the city council. My name is Tony Sustak. I'm a resident of Richmond, member of the Citizens for East Shore Parks, but I'm also the treasurer of the Richmond Progressive Alliance, which has had quite a little bit of input with regard to housing issues. And for example, we've supported just evictions. We've supported ban the box, which means giving people who are doing reentry from prison a chance to get reestablished. And with regard specifically to your ordinance here, I have some actual personal experience in my own life. We took in a kid, two kids actually, who were in, quote, "transitional" housing. They were in a Kairos group home in Oakland. And that home existed because as much lip services is paid to families in this country, we know in fact there's not a lot of support for families. So these were kids who were making the transition from being young teenagers into adulthood. And that relationship has continued, the adopting of that child that came out of that place. We now have a granddaughter who's going to graduate from high school this year. And for about 11 years, we lived in Oakland on Sutter Street. And at the corner of Sutter and 35th Ave, there was a halfway house. And the only reason you knew it was a halfway house is because people would kind of come and go. And every once in a while, you'd get somebody who had carpentry skills or something, and they'd make some improvement. So the entire time that I was there, there was never any problem whatsoever with that place. So I think what this argues is that we need to provide, Albany stepping up to do what it's shared, to provide places that may be necessary to house kids and other people who are making transition into society or into adulthood, again, the group homes, and then the halfway houses for people who either are doing reentry from being in prison or jail, or people who are recovering from drugs, et cetera, that they have a place. And that those places properly monitored and run can be very successful, and you don't even know they're there, they're just neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hello, I'm Naomi Young. I'm with Bay Area Legal Aid, and I'm speaking on behalf of our clients, the Albany Housing Advocates, Amber Whitson and Betty Stevenson. And we did some mid-written comments, and I'm just going to expand on those a little bit. We do support the staff's recommendation to amend the municipal code to allow transitional and supportive housing by right in the residential and mixed-use zones. We also support the emergency shelter facilities by right in the commercial mixed-use and San Pablo Commercial Zone. However, we disagree with staff's recommendation and urge you to go with the commission's recommendation to allow emergency shelters by conditional use permit in the Solano Commercial and R-3 High Density Residential Zones, because the permit process allows the case-by-case evaluation of the effect on neighboring uses, but at the same time, allows for more potential sites where Albany can build the kind of housing that is necessary. Now, we know that only one is necessary by law, but if the desire is to actually get something built, having potential sites is one thing. Getting something built depends on the developers and whoever wants to come in and build those. The more sites that you have available, the more possibility that you'll have that somebody will want to come in there and build. We also would urge the city to evaluate during the 2015 to 23 housing element period whether or not it might actually make sense to also make shelters by right in those particular zones, and to look again at the restrictions with regards to the 25-bed and 300-foot restrictions that are currently now in place.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Catherine Sutton, Albany resident, speaking for myself. I commend the council on its circumspect actions on the bulb, allowing the people there to be treated as they might treat their own neighbors. One of the things that I've become aware of is how difficult it is for anybody to place people who have dogs. There are not many landlords who are willing to take in people who have dogs. And by their nature, the people who live at the bulb, they need their dogs. Some of them are service dogs. So this is a problem. And one of the things that I have been thinking is that a solution could involve a cluster somewhere of self-built houses, such as have been seen in places like Dignity Village and others, or community-built homes using reused or natural building materials, so these people can live in a dignified way with their animals, and you're not going to be struggling with this particular problem. One of the areas that has been suggested is in the CMX zone in the PetSmart site. So I, you know, I'm not very good sometimes at the background details, but this is an idea that might have merit, to use the PetSmart building as an emergency shelter or as a resource center and as a resource center for the homeless, and the parking lot perhaps for people to build their homes. On a related note, I would say that I have heard that whereas Berkeley Food and Housing Project has not been terribly successful and is now running, I believe on new staff, you may not, is it?
Keep that part for the part of discussion.
Okay. I've said my bit. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker, please. We need for the speakers to come up, please. Please, the rest of the speakers, will you line up over there so that we have an efficient progress? Bless you.
I'm Edward Bennett. I've spoken here several times, so you probably know me by now. I'm a resident of Berkeley, but I'm also very interested in Albany and what's happening. As I read the agenda tonight, this is one of three items which address the Albany bulb problem. This one addresses even more than that problem. And I think, I guess I'd like to thank the Albany council for these several actions that they're having, and encourage them to pass this and the other two items on the agenda which concern the problems on the bulb. And then I won't get up and speak to those two problems, but this way I'll speak to them all three. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, I would just like to remind the council of--
Hi, I would just like to remind the council of a couple quotes I got from the HCD website. One, and these are pertaining to the government code 865834A something. It has to do with the zoning for emergency shelters. It says, "The identified zone or zones must include sufficient capacity to accommodate the need for emergency shelter as identified in the housing element, except," and they put that on capitals, "except that each jurisdiction must identify a zone or zones to accommodate at least one year-round shelter. Please be aware if the adopted housing element from the previous cycle, the fourth cycle, included a program to address the requirements of SB 2 for emergency shelters, and the required timeframe has lapsed, the department will not be able to find future housing elements in compliance until the required rezoning is complete and the element is amended to reflect that rezoning." Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Kleiner, Albany resident. I just want to encourage you to support the allowing emergency shelters by right in both the CMX zone and the San Pablo Avenue zone. I think that's a major step towards allowing us to actually have emergency shelter in places that it may be feasible. The CMX zone, in my opinion, doesn't have enough space for that at this point in time, enough sites that may be possible. And I really encourage you to look forward in the future to other possibilities as well, because limiting the possibilities may limit our ability to actually have an actual emergency shelter developed. And I also think that in terms of transitional and supportive housing, I think that's something as a community we have to look at. Small is better in a lot of times for transitional housing. So, 25-bed facilities may not be what we're looking for. We may just be looking for small facilities. And six-bed facilities actually don't need any special clearance, but anything larger than that would. Thanks. Thanks.
Hi, my name's Brian Parker. I want to speak in support of the recommendation that was made by the woman from Legal Aid, I guess. I live next to, so I guess the idea of the R3, these facilities being allowed with a use permit in R3 and Solano Commercial has been put off, is being proposed to be put off to the general plan process. I live one lot away, like 100 feet away from an R3 zone, and my office is in a Solano Commercial zone, and I think it would be appropriate to allow them to be permitted in those zones with a use permit. I think a lot of, you know, comments have been thrown around, both on here and Albany Patch, about animus that somehow is being harbored by Albany residents and city government about the homeless. And I don't think in any of our minds, there's that animus exists. The reality is, we're dealing with a specific issue at the bulb, and I think it's an easy way to show that, you know, we're a caring community to do the most we can within reasonable bounds to make provision for these facilities, and I encourage the council to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Alan Eckert, Albany resident. Firstly, I would just advise you to make sure that the definitions for emergency and transition are very clear, or at least meeting some kind of state standard. But I take public transit, and I actually would highly recommend if we're looking into putting transitional shelters anywhere, that it should be closer to accessible transit. And if you look at this CMX zone here, there's not much that's available from AC Transit. And if you're going to the San Pablo or the Solano, you've got the 1872, and people can get basically anywhere they need to get the services they need around the county from there. And I think that should be taken into high consideration when looking at areas where at least transitional shelter, not necessarily emergency sheltering, if there's an emergency, that may not be available. But for transitional homes and et cetera, public transit is needed by people who don't have the vehicles or ability to get to the other side of the county, like we saw with Stop Waste. Even people with cars can't even get to downtown Oakland to drop off their waste, so how can you expect somebody without a car to be able to get to those areas as well very easily?
Thank you.
Good evening, Ed Fields, Albany resident. I'm glad that Jeff Bond clarified this, because what you have in writing before you, the ordinance that you have before you, at best is confusing, and I think is actually misleading. When Ansu read the ordinance, and what you have in the ordinance, and where it says "whereas," one, two, three, four, I guess the fifth "whereas," has the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and it has four parts to it. So, you have an ordinance that says "whereas," and it has four parts, but what you have incorporated in the actual language of the ordinance itself, which is partially in the table, the modifications to the table, is staff's recommendation, which only contains three of those items. So, on the one hand, you have an ordinance that says we're going to do four things, but it only does three things. The third thing being Solano Commercial and R3 that staff said need further study. So, I'm glad Jeff said it, because the staff report does not mention the December 11th Planning and Zoning Commission in the background information, and what their unanimous recommendation was. And actually, the ordinance is wrong. The meeting was not December 18th, it was December 11th. So, certainly, I urge you to, at the very least, do what is in the ordinance before you, staff's recommendation. What I don't understand, and what we always see, is the distinction between San Pablo Commercial and Solano Commercial. So, we can have an emergency shelter in San Pablo Commercial by right, but we can't have one in Solano Commercial even with a use permit. That needs further study. Why? I would contend that having an emergency shelter next to an auto repair place, or heaven forbid, an auto body shop that has spray paint and fumes blasting out of it all day long, is probably much worse than having an emergency shelter near a Safeway or a So, I don't understand, again, why we're limiting it to San Pablo Commercial. We're not putting in Solano Commercial as well by right, as was recommended by one planning and zoning commissioner. They did compromise on, with a use permit, in Solano Commercial, but we're putting it off because it needs further study. Doesn't make any sense to me. I mean, why don't we need further study and further public input from the San Pablo Commercial District? So, I would recommend that you go, at least with the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation, which is what is in the "whereas" of your ordinance, even though it was left out of the details in the chart. And I think you should go further, because I think you don't need more study for either Solano or San Pablo Commercial. Thank you.
Thank you.
Clay Larson, Albany resident. The intent of this is to satisfy state law, and I think state law is completely satisfied by providing emergency housing by right in the CMX district. If you read the brief section 65583A4A, it requires only that there be sufficient capacity. There's lots of capacity in the CMX. So, I think that's satisfied. I would support continuing the right to have emergency housing in San Pablo Commercial with a conditional use permit. I think the value of the conditional use permit is nicely captured in the staff report when it notes that the condition use permit process allows the city to review an application to make sure that it does not potentially affect neighboring land uses negatively. And I would agree with Ed Fields. I think in many ways, Solano Avenue, there's a church in Solano Avenue that's very active in these issues, might be a better location for emergency housing. But I would, I think the council should support allowing, with a conditional use permit requirement, emergency housing in the Solano Commercial, as well as the current right in San Pablo Commercial. There is other sections of the government code that would appear to preclude the city from arbitrarily and capriciously turning down an application. So, I think the law, if an appropriate application with appropriate security is submitted, that it can be approved. So, I think, right here. I would agree with Ed Field's comment, that the sudden need to do more study of the Solano Commercial is suspicious. So, I think those are my comments. I can't read what I wrote here. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Andrew Franklin from Solano Community Church. And I just wanted to speak in support of the staff recommendations. From hearing and learning from Jeff Bond over the last years or so, I had no idea about any of this stuff, CMX, R3, C3PO. I knew nothing about this, but I learned that as it's really exciting to have conversations about, you know, holistic solutions for, you know, people who are in need in this community, conversations like this are necessary to happen first, and I knew nothing about zoning and this and that. And so, I'm really excited and encouraged that this has been the staff recommendation to make the changes necessary to entertain conversations about using land differently than Albany has in the past. And so, I'm excited about that, and I'm also excited that these are conversations that are happening, and to see a city work like this, to where this conversation wasn't happening, at least specifically about where can we put emergency shelter, transition housing or shelter, et cetera. This is something that people have spoken up about desiring this and wanting to see this happen, and the city responding and saying, yes, these are the changes necessary to do that. So, I'm encouraged to see positive steps in this direction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Francesco Papalea. I am delighted to be, agree with so many of the speakers that have spoken here about expanding the allowed areas beyond the two zones of the industrial zone and the San Pablo zone, because I, and I think anyone who has followed any kind of projects to try to develop anything in this town, that there's very limited space, very few options of locales that could be utilized. And by limiting the options to those, to just two zones, severely limits our flexibility of what sites would be, could be used, and the size of the sites. I think if anything that we've learned over the last 10 years is that we need to have more flexibility to be able to solve problems. There's just not that many sites available. So, please consider expanding it to all four recommended zones. This is the first reading. So, take the leap, get out in front of the issue, show some leadership about this, that everyone in this town is for, or should be able to be impacted by these kinds of things. I think if we expand it to all four zones, it would be the closest way in which it would actually be a town-wide, potentially shared participation in this project to help house the people that we want to help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Julie Winklestein, Albany resident. I actually agree with Francesco and with Ed, so I don't have a lot to contribute to that, although I actually frankly have to say that I think that the whole city should be zoned that way, that we should be able to have transitional housing, SROs, homeless shelters, anywhere in the city, that that would be truly integrated housing, and that's what I believe in. I think a lot of the, whatever it's been, the bad feelings have been caused by a lack of communication, a lack of exposure to different kinds of people. If we want to have a really, truly strong community, we need to have diverse housing everywhere. But I wanted to, what I want to particularly address also is that since this is a first reading, and I understand that there'll be public input before the second reading, and I want to encourage you to do, maybe to make more of an effort to have public input, because it doesn't seem like, last time when this came up, when the housing element came up, and there was going to be, you were going to try to get people to come in from the community, I made a comment about it, but I didn't see anything anywhere I went in Albany. I didn't get an email, I didn't see a flyer, I didn't see anything. I just, I felt like it would be very easy for 99% of the people in Albany to not know that this conversation was going on, and if you really want public input, you need to put yourself out there and make sure, just pretend it's a campaign thing. Pretend you're running for office, but instead of running for office, you're trying to get people to come to your meetings to actually contribute and be part of this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Brian Parsley, Albany resident. I think this is a first, where you're going to see Brian Parker, myself, and Ed Fields all agree on the same thing. I do live in the Solano District, and I see no reason to do further study. I mean, if you're going to have a residential, if you're going to do transitional housing in the CMX zone, and then mixed-use R3 zones on San Pablo, I don't see why you wouldn't incorporate that into Solano as well. I'm confused why there needs to be study on that. I think if anything, as Alan has said, the public transit, there's no public transit in CMX. I mean, so it's kind of silly unless we're trying to hide people, to put them in the CMX zone. And I don't see the point of that. So, I think we're going to need to look at, the reality being that transitional housing, emergency shelters are going to be in the mixed-use sections of town. So, that's going to be San Pablo and Solano. So, I think the other mindset that we need to get out of is that this is to fix the bulb. This is not to fix the bulb. This has really nothing to do with the bulb at all. In fact, I would even say to get out of the mindset of even the upcoming items, there are homeless people in this city that do not live in the bulb. I know that may come to a shock to you, but it's true, and we have abandoned them in this process, absolutely abandoned them. So, I think that, to be fair to the entire community, that the entire community needs to share in some of this process. So, whether that transitional housing be near my house on Solano, or near Brian's house on San Pablo, or, that's what we're going to have to do, and we're going to have to, we might as well do it now, bring it back for a second reading in two weeks, and just get it done. Why waste time? Thanks.
Thank you.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Robert Chastey, speaking as an individual and president of Citizens for East Shore Parks. Actually, the issue of the bulb and the issue of homelessness only happen to have an overlap. They really are different things. And I'm glad to see the council addressing this issue, and addressing the needs of people who are in some ways the least among us. And whether you decide to go with the recommendation of staff, or the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission, I think the important thing is you're taking a step that will improve the situation, and this is an issue that's not going to change or disappear overnight. You'll have plenty of time to think about it, tinker with it, and improve it and see what works best. So, thank you very much for doing this. I think it's really important.
Thanks. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this issue? Then we'll bring it back to council.
I need to ask some clarifying questions, because now I'm the one who's confused. I'm looking at the action here in our little iPad, the proposed action, and it says, "Allow transitional and supportive housing by right in residential and mixed-use zoning districts." Is that correct? Okay, we'll wait for Jeff.
Conditional use permit is what the ordinance says.
The staff recommendation is to allow by right in the commercial mixed-use district and the San Pablo commercial district.
But transitional supportive.
I stand on the other, what was your question again about the transition?
So, my understanding, what you would like us to propose and vote on is, item one is, let me go back and read this. Introduce for first reading ordinance number 2014-02 amendments to the planning and zoning chapter of the municipal code 2.1, allow transitional and supportive housing by right, that means that, a CUP, in residential and mixed-use zoning districts.
Correct. Correct.
That would be any, virtually any neighborhood in...
Anywhere where you could do, where you today could do a conventional residential project.
So either Brian's neighborhoods?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to clarify that. And then, two, allow emergency shelter facilities by right, no conditional use permit required, hang on, in CMX and San Pablo commercial zone. Okay. And then, three, three is, you know, legal, gobble, legook, blah, 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 blah. And then, direct staff to evaluate the commission recommendation to allow emergency shelters with a conditional use permit, not by right, but with a conditional use permit, in Solano commercial and R3 high-density, as part of the housing element and the, you know, the general plan discussion process, which will involve lots and lots of public input. Okay, so we're clear on that. There was some confusion, I think. I mean, we're talking about what we're asked to approve tonight would allow transitional and supportive housing virtually anywhere where there's already housing. Yes, okay. And then, emergency shelters, which are different beasts. They're bigger, they require, you know, perhaps bigger facilities, you know, et cetera. By right, in CMX and San Pablo commercial, where there's going to be bigger commercial spaces available. So I just want to make sure everybody here is on the same page now. I hope. Okay, I'm done. Thank you.
Yeah, I think I'm a little confused as well, because it doesn't, the ordinance itself doesn't seem to say what the staff recommendation says. I'm on page one of the ordinance.
Right. The whereas clauses are intended to capture kind of the factual background and the history.
So basically, what you did, okay, I think I now understand what you did. The whereas is tell what the process was. So, in other words, the reason that you included it, lines 23 to 27, is you wanted to show what the Planning and Zoning Commission did. Okay, I got it. I understand what you're doing now.
I suppose if it would help clarify the thinking here, we could add a whereas clause that captures the staff recommendation, which is then what's been drafted in the ordinance that follows.
Yeah, because, yeah, I think, I think that would help to make it more clear.
Question. So, what is your understanding of what we have here and what is being asked for Solano? What's the difference between studying, let's say, and what not studying? What would be the difference for the city or for the plan for the housing element? I mean, does it, you know, does it make it harder, or is there must be a reason why there's a study versus what's being asked?
The, it's just a process issue. We wanted to, when we originally went to the Planning and Zoning Commission first in October, we kind of focused in on the CMX district. When we prepared the staff report for planning and zoning in December, we acknowledged that San Pablo Avenue also could be a location where it's a permitted use without the use permit process. Nothing in the agenda for the Planning and Zoning Commission said anything about Solano Avenue or the R3 district. It was in that discussion at the commission, which happened to be late in the evening, where that came up. So at the very least, there's just kind of a public noticing consideration that you can, it was certainly in your notice here tonight, but in terms of the vetting that your planning and zoning commission did, that really wasn't on the agenda. So things that normally I'd do some, do outreach to, to say, the Solano Avenue Association, example, would be an organization, we'd probably want to make sure was aware that this was going to be discussed. We didn't do that. So that's why you have the recommendation before you. It's not anything about the relative geography, and that some parts of town are worthy of it and other parts of town are not worthy of it, or the other.
So you feel that you would need more time to do some outreach, but it wouldn't necessarily take a long time? Or, I mean...
It, well, certainly getting the outreach, getting it started wouldn't take a long time. Whether it raises a discussion that ends up taking a long time, hard to predict. But we would like to get something and get ourselves into compliance sooner, and that's why we kind of bifurcated the process, get the basics done sooner rather than later, and then engage on the other issue, which is a good one, with using the process that we've set up. But if you wanted to do a separate process, that would be fine. But one way or the other, kind of going out there and doing some outreach to people so that everybody knows what's going on.
Doesn't mean that it wouldn't happen. Doesn't sound like it wouldn't. It's not something that, you know, right now, it's not that we have to hurry it up, but it would happen within the time frame, let's say.
Correct. Or you, if you wanted to, I mean, our recommendation is to act on this sooner rather than later, but if you felt like you needed to do that study now, you could reband this back to the commission for further discussion.
I watched the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on, it's on video, and you can watch it at home. It was very late. They kept having to give themselves more time. And it was my impression that not everybody on the commission was fully understanding what was going on. So it did seem to me at the time that they kind of took the ball and ran with it a little bit further than they were being asked to do. I think inclusion of San Pablo certainly makes a lot of sense, particularly with these transit issues that have come up. I think that's very important in making functional emergency housing. But at least I would be a little more comfortable at this point going with staff recommendations, and then further studying Solano, R3, and other residential areas at this point. Because I don't think the word has gotten out enough.
Can we get a clean resolution here?
It's your turn. Did you want to speak?
No, I just was wondering if, I'm ready to make a motion, but we need a clean motion here.
Let's try.
Since you have a, do you have, did you want to incorporate that additional whereas with the staff recommendation, or are we happy with what?
You could do that in your motion, that come back in the second reading with the, correct the date. Mr. Fields is correct, I had the wrong date. And then add a whereas clause to capture the staff recommendation. And anything else you want to clarify?
I'll defer to the mayor.
So, would you like to move?
Frank, no, why don't you do it, because you've got the paper copy. It's hard to read off.
All right. Would you want me to read it, and then you'll say whether you approve what it's on here? Okay. All right. Councilmember Barnes. Ordinance amending Chapter 13 of the municipal code to establish an alternate method of public facility, oh wait, stop. Okay, sorry. Introduce for first reading ordinance number 2014-02 amendments to the planning and zoning chapter of the municipal code to, one, allow traditional and supportive housing by right in residential and mixed-use zoning districts. Two, allow emergency shelter facilities by right in the commercial mixed-use and San Pablo commercial zone. Three, amend related definitions of land use, parking requirements, physical characteristics, and distance between emergency shelters. And add the staff recommendation to the whereas's. Would you like to move that? Is that what you want, is that what you want to move?
Yeah, so move.
Okay, don't take it away, because I'm going to need it. Thank you.
I'll second.
Is that what you're moving? Okay, is there a second?
No, Marge seconded.
Oh, thank you, okay. All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Barnes, seconded by Councilmember Atkinson, that we introduce for first reading ordinance number 2014-02 amendments to the planning and zoning chapter of the municipal code to, one, allow transitional and supportive housing by right in residential and mixed-use zoning districts. Two, allow emergency shelter facilities by right in the commercial mixed-use and San Pablo commercial zone. And three, amend related definitions of land uses, parking requirements, physical characteristics, and distance between emergency shelters. And that we add the whereas with the staff recommendation and waive the reading of the ordinance. Okay? Will you please poll the council?
Councilmember Atkinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Barnes?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wild?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Aye, and the motion carries. Next item, please.
Seven dash two, ordinance amending Chapter 13 of the municipal code to establish an alternate method of public facility design and construction, and resolution approving procedures for the implementation of the design-build alternate method of public facility procurement. Staff recommendation that the city council, one, conduct a public hearing and first reading of ordinance number 2014-01 to establish an alternate method of public works facility design and construction, and, two, adopt resolution number 2014-4 approving procedures for the implementation of design-build alternate method of public facility procurement.
Staff, please.
So, Mayor and Council, nice to be back to see you again.
Thank you, we're coming.
So as you recall, in October, there were a series of about eight actions that staff had recommended to you to take in order to advance the Public Works Service Center project. And one of them was to adopt an ordinance that would allow the use of the design-build method, so that we could undertake a more rapid design and development of this project, and also to allow us to use a financing method that we wouldn't have to go out and sell bonds before the project started. So the idea here is that we would enter into an agreement with a design-build developer who would design and build the project, and then would enter into a second agreement for the facility financing. And after 25 years of lease payments, we'll end up with a facility fully paid for. So this is the first step as far as the ordinance is concerned. The ordinance itself is very simple, and just says that you're allowing this method to be used. It has been used by other charter cities, so you're not out on new ground here. It also, pursuant to some legislation that was passed a few years ago, general law cities are allowed to use it as well. So there are a number of cities that are using this method. And then, secondly, the resolution portion of the action simply takes some of the details of how you would go about implementing this ordinance, and so it sets forth some procedures and rules. So for example, the council would approve beforehand what the project is and what the scope is before we solicited proposals, that we would solicit proposals broadly, or to a set of experienced developers or contractors. Thirdly, that there would be a prevailing wage requirement. And fourth, the usual notice requirements. So those are the two pieces of legislation before you tonight in a very brief overview, and I'll be happy to answer any questions about details if you have any.
Are there questions from council? Okay, then we'll open.
Yeah, could you give us sort of a timeline of what would happen if this gets approved, and when things might start, and is that kind of, just kind of an overview?
So, with the adoption of this, this will allow us then to go to the next step of soliciting developers, developers slash contractors to actually submit proposals to us. And what I'm considering doing and recommending to you at the next meeting is that you do that in a two-step process, that you first issue requests for qualifications very broadly to everyone and anyone who wants to submit on that. And in that way, you know you've cast your net as far as you can. And then, we'll get a number of submittals from that, and we can narrow that down to a smaller group, which would be brought back to the council for approval, and then ask that smaller group to actually then submit proposals. Because it'll be more costly to go into that proposal phase. And so you don't want to ask everyone in the world to have to do that. You want to just do it with the firms that you feel confident have the right qualifications. So that can happen in, the next step can happen at the beginning of February, towards the beginning of March for the second phase of it. And then in the meantime, later on the agenda, you have a contract with an architectural firm to develop the specifications that would be given to that design-build firm to follow, so that you make sure that you end up with the type of facility that you want. And that work will take about two, about two months to complete. And there'll be a progress report coming back to you on that when we get to the point where we actually have some preliminary ideas about how the facility lays out, and what the preliminary cost is, and so forth. So in that same timeframe, we'll be doing that. And the idea is that we would want to have then our design specifications approved by council and in place, and then also a design builder selected by and approved by council in place around April. And then, we then move into the design development phase with that selected contractor.
Any other questions? Okay. And we'll open the public hearing. If you would like to speak, would you please bring your card and come to the podium? No? No one wishes to speak on this issue? Okay, then we'll bring it back to council.
I just have a quick question. This is the space, it's, this is the space that's next door to Albany Steel. I'm sorry.
Sorry, I want to just close the public hearing. Thank you.
It's next to our existing corporation yard, so the parcel that we're in contract to acquire is 540 Cleveland, and that's next door to 548 Cleveland, where we're currently located.
And where is that with respect to Albany Steel? I only know because I have a friend in the condos, and I look out the window, he said, gesturing and holding on to the mic button at the same time, and there's a big vacant lot they're clearing out just south of Albany Steel. And that's our spot, right?
Yes.
Okay. That's, I can monitor it carefully for you.
So, I just had a few comments, and I'm quite encouraged by this development. Some of the council know, and others may know, my wife's an architect and does a lot of design-build with her firm. And this is a common thing for large public agencies. UC and UCSF have both been doing design-build projects. And it seems particularly appropriate for this one, given it will allow us to do it without passing a bond necessarily. And it really works well in the collaborative process, from my understanding of it all, between developer, architect, and builder. And it can contribute to a speed of the process, less adversarial, and ultimately will save money.
The mayor's busy here. Do I have a motion? Sure. And I'm looking at the staff recommendation here. It says, "Conduct a public hearing", which is, I'm assuming that's what this is. And first reading of ordinance number 214-01, "To establish an alternate method of public works facility design and construction", and two, "Adopt resolution 2014-4 approving procedures for the implementation of the design-build alternate method of public facilities procurement." Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Poll the council.
Councilmember Atkinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Barnes?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wild?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Aye, and the motion carries. Next item, please.
Berkeley Food and Housing Project Contract Extension to Continue the City's Homeless Outreach and Engagement Program. Staff recommendation that the city council approve resolution number 2014-6 authorize- dash six authorizing the city manager to extend the contract with Berkeley Food and Housing Project to conduct outreach and engagement service to homeless in Albany for a period of one year at a cost not to exceed seventy-six thousand to be split between fiscal year thirteen fourteen and fiscal year fourteen fifteen.
Staff, please.
Yes. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. So, I'll go over the staff report briefly, and then I'll give the floor to BFHP staff for their presentation. So, the recommendation before council is to approve the extension of Berkeley Food and Housing Project's contract for a period of one year at a cost not to exceed seventy-six thousand dollars so that BFHP can continue to conduct the city's homeless outreach and engagement program. A little bit of background, on June seventeen, council authorized the city manager to enter into an agreement with BFHP to implement the city's homeless outreach and engagement program. And the contract was also subsequently renewed until January twenty-first. BFHP's outreach engagement team provides a number of services, including tours of apartments, transportation to appointments, referrals to other agencies, fee waivers for California IDs, finding rental units, building relationship with landlords, linking clients to available move-in assistance, funds for security deposit and rental subsidies, and housing retention assistance. So far, BFHP has engaged with sixty individuals, and of those sixty, forty have been willing to complete a housing assessment. Of the forty individuals who completed the assessment, thirty-three have shown interest in housing and have been willing to share personal information necessary to complete the HMIS intake. BFHP has housed seven individuals, of which five remain in housing, and BFHP continues to provide services to assist clients in retaining their housing. With the extension of the contract, would include a one full-time case manager that would be coordinated by the agency's MSC supervisor, and program oversight would be provided by Lara Tenenbaum, Director of Client Services. In order to best connect with the homeless population, the case manager would have a flexible schedule, including late afternoons and evening hours, operate from a mobile office, and would be available by phone and conduct outreach throughout the city of Albany. Services would continue to include outreach with a goal for engagement and relationship building to encourage participation in services and housing. Case management will continue to assess people who are homeless, focusing on tenant screening and housing retention issues. Clients would also be assessed for placement in Alameda County's Homestretch Pilot Project, which is a pilot project by Everyone Home, and Alameda County Behavioral Healthcare Services. The case manager and client will also create a housing case plan together, which may include referrals to other mainstream services to help obtain and maintain housing. And the case manager will also identify rental units available, build relationships with landlords, and work with clients on the move-in process and housing retention. So, the current contract with BFHP ends January twenty-first, two thousand fourteen, which is today. Extending the contract with BFHP for one year would allow BFHP to build upon the outreach and engagement done to date, to continue pursue offering a housing assistance and support to willing homeless individuals, to provide housing retention support to people who have been housed in Oakland and Richmond, and to individuals who may be housed in the future. All services would be provided for the entire year, and outreach will be provided throughout the city. As for the financial impact, a combination of general fund from the Human Services Division and CDBG funds will be used for the contract extension. The cost of the contract extension will be split between fiscal year thirteen fourteen and fourteen fifteen. Are there any questions, or would you like to do the presentation first? So, I would like now to introduce BFHP's executive director, Terry Light, and Lara Tenenbaum, Director of Client Services, and Carmen Francois, who was one of the case managers who worked for the Albany Project Hope. They are here to make a presentation that will include the proposed scope of work for the extension and also provide council with an update on activities for the last ninety
Thank you for inviting us here this evening. Thank you for the support in the past. So, we do have a formal presentation, but I thought I'd begin with just a couple of...
Would you, excuse me, would you please speak to the council?
Oh, sure, of course. Thank you for your support and the opportunity to talk about our proposal. Something that's not in our PowerPoint presentation, but I thought you would be interested as the representatives of the city, is although our contract was initially through December thirty-first, and we were authorized to spend sixty thousand dollars, by the end of December thirty-first, we had spent only, less than forty-five thousand. And it was because of that that we were able to get the accommodation from the city to continue to today. And because, what I wanted to just explain was that, so Carmen's here this evening, Carmen has transitioned to working in another program of the agency, and Laverne Redmond, who's another one of our staff of the outreach program, is continuing to work on a limited basis pending whether this contract is authorized to go forward, because staff thought it was ending December thirty-first, just as a point of clarification. So, we're just going to show very briefly a slide about the agency's mission for those people that don't know us in Berkeley, that we do have shelter, transitional housing, and permanent supportive housing all in Berkeley. And, so if you can go to the next slide, thanks, Carmen. And these are the four elements of the program that we're suggesting would be combined in one staff member going forward, that we've had some time to evaluate and look at what we had put in our original scope last summer, sort of what's developed going out in the city, what would seem to be the most effective and efficient use of resources in Albany was to combine those tasks in one person. So, it would be the four elements, outreach and engagement, assessment and case management, housing search, landlord cultivation, and housing placement and retention. So, if you can go to the next one. So, what I think we would like to talk about are some successes. When we first started, and I don't know if Andrew's still here, Andrew from Slano Community Church helped make the bridge for us out on the ball and in other parts of the city with people that were homeless here in Albany. We'd only had some limited contact with people homeless in Albany during our homeless prevention rapid rehousing. And we think one of the things that's probably the biggest success is that our staff has made contact with so many people that are homeless here in Albany, and it began that relationship building, which is critical to anything that comes after that. So, I wanted to highlight that. I think the other thing we have done is work on developing relationships with landlords specific to the people here in Albany and specific to the needs. I know one of the speakers spoke about the great number of people in Albany that are homeless with pets, specifically dogs, and that's one of the challenges. But I think one of the successes is, is working with landlords and developing those relationships. I think one of our other successes is that we have worked with people here, sort of expanding the geographic scope of where they'll look for housing, so that it might not be right here, but expanding out both to the south and to the north. So, some of the challenges is that, I think I want to start with, change is hard. Change is hard for all of us, and I think you've heard speakers in other council meetings talk about having lived here homeless in Albany for years. So, making a transition into housing, making a transition away from people you know, from routines you know, is a hard and difficult life decision. And we knew coming into this work that doing outreach and engagement could take a while, helping people transition to a new way of living could take a while, and that's a challenge. I think some of the other things that have been challenges, and I mentioned substance abuse, which really goes to lack of income, that most of the people living homeless have very low income, and if people have a substance abuse problem, some of their limited income is going to go to purchase substances. Therefore, they'd have even less money for rent, which makes it challenging finding a rent that might fit in their budget. And then, I think just to mention dogs, that it's difficult to find, I think someone mentioned that, it's difficult to find landlords that will take dogs. It's even more difficult to have landlords who will take large dogs and more than one, but we're working on, you know, seeing if we can find landowners that will do that. So, to, I'm not going to spend a lot of time about what we have done. I think Isabel did a job of kind of wrapping that up. But to talk about what we plan to do going forward. So, while the winter shelter is ineffective here in Albany, we will spend time at the shelter and out in the ball. But our intention is and has been to do outreach engagement and case management to anyone who's homeless in the city. And so, going forward to make sure that we have stops at the community center at Albany Hill and other places that we find that there's encampments and people living outdoors that might need the assistance of our staff. I think we want to continue to provide basic needs and that relationship building that people, we know, develop trust slowly, and that if we can help with finding something that's critical, if it's just a driver's license or an ID, can help develop a relationship so that a person might trust us to help them find housing. I think the other thing is focusing on the housing retention and stabilization that we're hoping to spend more focus as the year goes on, that is, two thousand fourteen, with after having moved people into housing to help them retain it, and whatever skills we might have to help people develop or doing landlord mediation so that people can stay and maintain their housing. What I'm going to do now is have Carmen talk a little bit about this tracking tool, about how staff keep track of their hours and what they're doing while they're out doing outreach and engagement. So, this is Carmen Francois. We love her, she's great.
Hi. So, during our daily routine at the ball, we would talk to different people. A lot of people needed medical services, so we would tally that. If they were talking about housing, we would tally that. If they needed mental health, we would connect them with mental health. Anything that they needed, we would provide. Transportation, if they didn't want to come with us, we give them bus tickets, whatever it took. The difficult thing was going out there and gaining trust. All these people are living in their own little separate community and don't want to really engage with us at first. So, that was a big hurdle. After we got that done, we did the intakes on people who were willing. We're not going to push ourselves on anyone. They invited us to their camps and started to trust us more. So, I think now people are more receptive to try and get housed before they weren't. So, if we could get more time to work on the housing, we also have to go to the landlords, because a lot of people have evictions. So, we have to sell our program to them. And so, I go in and I say, "My name's Carmen Francois, I work for Berkeley Food and Housing. We're a social service agency that tries to help the homeless reconnect and get established. And so, we need your help." And sometimes they'll help, and sometimes they won't. Another barrier is the dogs. Some have pit bulls, some have very large dogs. Usually, they say, "We'll take anything under twenty pounds." Well, you know, we have to keep searching. We don't give up. We're not going to give up. We'll keep searching as long as they'll stay with us. So, hopefully, you'll extend us so that we can help more people. As I say, they are more receptive. They are coming into Berkeley asking me for housing from Albany. So, it's encouraging. We do do wraparound, we do case management. In case the landlord has an issue with the tenant, we will go out and try to iron out anything that's going on. We also help with life skills. You know, you have to get reintroduced to being inside, and that's really, really hard. It's really, really hard. Some get claustrophobic. So, we do connect them with services, with someone they can talk to. Yeah, so, a lot of people out in the ball have a lot of stuff. So, we have to talk them into minimizing their stuff, and when they move in, we have to keep the clutter down, and that has become an issue. But they are receptive to our little tidbits of information we give them, and we're very connected with them. I mean, I know everybody out there, and they do say hi, and they do give you hugs, and they do know that we care. So, we really do care, and we really want to help. And hopefully, you'll let us do that.
Thank you.
Can we stop here in case there's questions?
Yeah, that's fine. Are there questions from council, per staff, or the ladies? No, okay, thank you. How many people want to speak to this issue? Okay, let's say, we'll make it two minutes each. And if you will turn in your cards, will you read the names so we can start moving people? Will you please move to the side over here so we can be...
Leila Uleisi, Sarira Navarro, Amber Whitson, Tony Sastak, Eric Costet.
Please line up.
Okay, read the rest, please.
Edward Bennett, Robert Lieber, Catherine Sutton, Robert Chasty, Beverly, I don't have a last name, Alan Eckert, and Lisa Kleinbub, Brian Parker.
All right. Robert, would you start, please?
I'm Robert Lieber. I'm an Albany citizen. I'm also here for Citizens for East Shore Park, Citizens for Albany Shoreline. I'm the chair of the Albany Social and Economic Justice Commission, although I'm speaking for myself on that issue. I support the council on this. I think this is the right way to move forward. It's the humane thing to do. We need these services in Albany, not just for today, but for tomorrow, if there's, in the future. We shouldn't just drop this once the park is created. We should find a way to have these services available somewhere in Albany, including transitional housing, which I have visited. Maybe not on this scale, but we did buy those two buildings out there. We don't own the showers or the bathrooms, but it would be good to have something in Albany on a permanent basis. So, thank you very much, and I support your action tonight.
Thank you. I appreciate, if you listen carefully to Robert, he stated his position for or against, and that would be very helpful if people would do that.
Robert Chasty, I guess I'm not next in line, but I'm here on behalf of the Sierra Club and Citizens for the, Citizens for the East Shore Parks. I'm in favor of the council position or the recommended action by staff. I want to say just a small point. It should be a goal in Albany to try to get people who are homeless reintegrated in society and give them, empower them so that they can handle their own lives well. And I think this, having facilitation like this from Berkeley Food and Housing enables that process. I think it's great that the city's doing it. I think it'll be helpful, and I especially like the fact that it's not just directed at the people at the ball, but it's for anybody who happens to be homeless in Albany. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And good evening, councilmembers. Madam Mayor, Tony Sastak, Richmond, Richmond Progressive Alliance. And I wanted to put in a little plug for people who get located in Richmond. Richmond has supported a number of programs that would benefit people. One of the, the person who runs Safran Strand, which is a homeless program which is geared to giving people who are homeless who the skills that they would need to begin a transition back to being productive citizens, back to work. So, the issues around, the issues around how do you get yourself, your life organized so you can begin a process of training to re-enter to become a productive citizen, Safran Strand is doing that. And then, Richmond has a number of other programs. Richmond Builds, an extension of that which is supported by the RPA, which is Solar Richmond, which is a nationally recognized program. Richmond has also pushed to make it a little bit easier for people, again, to ban the box for people who have criminal records, can get at least an interview without being pushed out first. And again, a re-entry program in Richmond. So, people who end up in Richmond have a number of opportunities to get replugged back in society. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Serena Navarro.
Hi, I'm Serena Navarro. I'm living in Oakland and just here representing with my friend Berkeley Free Clinic, who couldn't be here today. So, council members, according to the terms of the people that you hired to work on finding a solution for the Albany residents living on the Albany bulb, you should be providing a shelter that is open in the evening for sleeping and showers and warmth, coupled with caseworkers from Berkeley Food and Housing to facilitate transition into other housing and programs. This has not happened. For the following reasons, based on reports from Albany residents who have been living on the bulb and their allies, people are less than inclined to consider this transitional phase a step in the right direction. There were some initial negative encounters between BFHP and bulb residents. So now, most, if not all, of the bulb residents do not trust BFHP. Also, since the summer, BFHP has housed only five people. BFHP is not talking to anyone on the bulb who does not have an income from GA or SSI, and this is more than half of the people who have been living there. SSI often takes two years to get and can even take as long as seven years because of the process to prove disability. Further, it is insulting for a city to expect its homeless to definitely have an income before receiving housing assistance. The Albany residents still feel as though they are being evicted from their homes, which they are, and have not been given enough time to adjust to leaving the relatively stable community that they have built over the years.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm trying to find the place, it was lost.
Excuse me, are you speaking for yourself?
My name is Laura Zelko, I'm a member of the Berkeley Free Clinic, and I'm also a member of the newly created Albany Bulb Committee of the Berkeley Free Clinic. And I'm also, I'm finishing what she started.
No, you have to speak for yourself.
I'm speaking for myself as a member of the Berkeley Free Clinic, because I am. So, the Albany residents still feel as though they're being evicted from their homes, which they are, and have not been given enough time to adjust to leaving the relatively stable community that they have built over the years. The alternative plan, the Ocean Newman, East Bay Community Law Center, and the Homeless Action Center presented to the Albany City Council included this desired extension before eviction but was not adopted. Also, because the shelter is a group of small trailers, several of the bulb residents have said that it looks and feels like a prison, which can elicit severe anxiety, and especially in people who have experienced confinement throughout their lives. Even though they will not work with anyone without an income, BFHP has not reached out to other organizations in the area that know how to navigate SSI, such as Homeless Action Center. As a result, a coalition from people, of people from Homeless Action Center, East Bay Community Law Center, Share the Bulb, and the Berkeley Free Clinic have been working with bulb residents, many of whom do not have an income, to help them get signed up for GA food stamps and Medi-Cal. And they have already signed up five people for those things in less than a month. In conclusion, it is not, in the opinion of the Berkeley Free Clinic's Albany Bulb Committee, we do not believe that it is a good idea to extend the contract of the Berkeley Food and Housing Project because they have not proven to the Albany City Council or to the bulb residents that they can do the job that they've set out to do. This is proven by their track record and by the track record of the newly formed coalition that has done the work that it has. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Amber Whitson, Albany Bulb resident and primary point of contact for the task force of East Bay Community Law Center and Homeless Action Center representatives who came out and in less than five days, not only did the paperwork with eight bulb residents, but then gave a ride to, completed five bulb residents actually getting an income, which Berkeley Food and Housing Project has referred zero bulb residents to Homeless Action Center, East Bay Community Law Center, or anywhere that I know of, to actually get an income, with the exception of the person who they said they got an income for, said they got him another job, because he already had two jobs when they first housed him. And they didn't even give him that job they said they did. So they've been giving false information to the city about people they housed, in fact, concerning those housings, including the fact that one man came from Florida, stayed at the shelter, and is now living as one of the three Albany bulb residents supposedly housed. Two Albany bulb residents, one guy who never spent one night at the bulb. There should be accountability. There should be accountability, and I think that you should probably not continue a contract with an organization who in October gave you a report that they engaged 56 people in conversations about housing, assessed 40 of them for housing, entered the information of 22 of them into HMIS, and then in January, three months later, has only engaged four more people, assessed the same number of people for housing, and then only added 11 more people to the HMIS system, which means they just completed enough information to enter those 11 people's information into the HMIS system. I think you should actually fall back, regroup, and do something with an organization like Homeless Action Center or someone who hasn't lost bulb residents' trust months ago. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Eric Husted. I'm a Berkeley resident and member of Share the Bulb, although I'm not here speaking on behalf of that group, just for myself. I do want to echo a lot of what my, a lot of what I heard from the folks from the Berkeley Free Clinic and also what Amber said. I think accountability is a huge part of this process. If we want Berkeley Food and Housing Project to be successful, we need to have clear measures of success or failure of this project. And I'm not aware of what those have been in this contract period, so I would hope that if you continue to extend the contract, that is something that you establish. I really want to say that I don't, I have seen a lot of instances that suggest to me that this organization is not focused on meeting the needs of residents. Those two residents that moved out of the house in Richmond because of their dog, before they, I just want folks to know, before they moved in there, they expressed a lot of concern about their dog living in a place with cats. And the other folk, the other woman that was moving there has cats. And so when I see that, I think, you know, how is that focused on meeting the needs? How is that being really attentive to what these people are going to need? And I don't see that. I've sat on the bulb several times with residents who've been waiting for this organization for over three hours, three hours late to show up for them. And I also want to say that with your policy of supporting the eviction plan, first, you're going to undermine trust in any organization that you, tenure to work with you and provide these services. I don't know if anybody is aware of the events that occurred on December 9th, 2013, in which a camp that was being stayed in, and there was a sign that marked that said this camp is not abandoned, that camp was being destroyed by police because people that had worked with Berkeley Food and Housing Project and did receive housing, signed a piece of paper that they didn't know what it was saying, but it was giving the city permission to destroy their camp. And they had given it to a friend of theirs, and that is going to undermine the trust in this organization. So you need to take a look at that policy, too.
Thank you.
My name is Beverly. This is Slingshot Hip Hop. I'm here to talk about toilets. Is anyone familiar with that? People need toilets. We need sanitation.
Excuse me, the issue is Berkeley Food and Housing Project's contract, so you need to speak to that.
If you have food, you need toilets. If you have housing, you need sanitation. Is this a secret? Am I saying something that doesn't make sense? And if you want people to be able to connect, you want some showers so people can freshen up at some point, feel comfortable with themselves and among others. It's a very simple, basic concept. It is not a waste of investment to have common, public toilets and showers for all.
Please speak to the issue. Please speak to the issue.
When there's food given to people, they're going to need toilets. And when they come together, they're going to need to wash at some point so they can be clean and fresh. I think that that makes common sense, that it's part of the issue. Thank you.
Hi, Alan Eckert, Albany resident. And at the risk it sound like I'm going off the issue, I promise you that I'm not. I got a puppy a few months ago. I gave her one day reprieve. Day two, I started training immediately. The fourth day I had her, I had her in classes immediately for obedience training. I couldn't do it on my own. I knew I had some skill with training a dog, but I needed that additional help to remind me of things that I'd forgotten or show me better ways to do things. Generally, I'm in favor for the plan with Berkeley Food and Housing Project, but I think there needs to be an emphasis in two areas. One, dog training and transition for the dogs, if people really want to keep their dogs. But two, there needs to be a larger conversation. If people are not willing to train their dogs to transition to housing, or if they're not willing to release their dog elsewhere and not trap, excuse me, not live without their pets, then they are going to not be houzable under many of these issues that we see here. So I think that there needs to be some kind of effort to address those issues if people want to keep their dogs, or at least harden that conversation with people to show them the reality of what the situation is. They either can get housing with dog, the pet training, don't bother training cats, or they're going to be unhousable generally. And this program is doomed to fail for those individuals anyway. So I think there needs to certainly be that focus for these pets, because these animals are only reacting and responding to the stimuli that they've been given in this environment.
You need to talk about the Berkeley Food and Housing.
Right, I'm getting to that point. And I think that there needs some, not just additional focus for talking to landlords and convincing them to take these dogs, but there needs to be a focus on the training and transitioning for the pets as well, or figuring out a way to convince people that they cannot live without these pets.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name, as you know, is Patricia Jones, Executive Director of Citizens for East Shore Park. The organization has worked for almost 30 years to protect and preserve our shoreline for public parks and open space resulting in McLaughlin East Shore State Park. SES supports the staff recommendation to extend the contract with Berkeley Food and Housing to conduct outreach and engagement services to the homeless in Albany for a period of one year, the cost not to exceed $76,000. We thank you for your ongoing efforts to provide services for those in need. SES sincerely hopes that the campers who have thus far chosen or been advised to not use the services will think about what is really in their best interest in the long run. We would like to see the people who need help get the help they deserve, because no one deserves to be encouraged to continue to live on the bulb, which is not a healthy or safe place for people to live. It has no running water, as the woman was just speaking about, no sanitation services, electricity, or other services required in residential neighborhoods. So I think we can do better than living on the bulb. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa Kleimbub, Albany resident, former member of the Homeless Task Force. I think it's interesting that we come to this point in January where we're questioning what has been done by the people working on helping to transition people from the bulb. I think it's interesting at this point in time, we're also talking about the other people who are living outside in the city. I think there are a number of issues that were raised by Berkeley Food and Housing about the length of the process, and I just want to bring to mind that when you had a Homeless Task Force as advising the council, providing some recommendations, we talked about all of these issues. We actually brought you information about the difficulties that people face, the issues with things like getting SSI. And so we're coming, in some ways in my mind, full circle around these issues, which none of us with experience in the social service field thought would be any different. I do want to encourage accountability. I am concerned about the vagueness of the reports. I would like to hear about exactly how many people were tallied. I hear reports anecdotally that there is a lack of trust, there is a lack of actually looking at real issues. The dog issue, I don't think, was really seriously addressed. And I would think, I mean, Alan Eckert and I probably don't agree on a whole lot, but I do think that providing assistance with training of animals and looking at some of that is probably an important thing to do. So I really have a lot of concerns about extending this contract for a whole year. It seems too long.
Thanks.
Julie Winklestein, Albany resident. I just want to comment on a few things. One of my largest concerns is what's going to happen. I think it's sort of alluded to in the document that I read about this, but obviously if you extend this contract for a year, the trailers are going to be gone long before the contract ends. And it sounded like somehow they're going to keep in touch with people. But I'm wondering where people are going to go. And I'm, you know, I'm looking back at when we, the Homeless Task Force, when we really recommended that people be transitioned straight from the bulb into housing rather than sort of going through this funnel, because what's going to happen is, I assume, is you're going to start to enforce the no camping ordinance that you discussed earlier, and then therefore where are these people going to be? So I don't know where you think they're going to be, that you'll be done with them when you move the trailers, but that concerns me. I also find it really interesting that you're getting two different stories. One of the stories coming from the people who are offering the services, and the other story coming from the people who are actually living at the bulb or interacting with the people at the bulb. And I think that it's great to hear from an organization that's offering services, but I think it's really important to hear from the people who are affected. You always want to talk directly to the people. And I think it would have been great if you would encourage more people to come tonight to tell you what their real experience is versus the reports that you're getting. And finally, I brought this up before, and I'm just going to guess I'll continue to bring it up until maybe something changes, but it's always people first when you're describing anybody, so I would really like it if you could change from calling people "the homeless" or saying homeless as you put in your report, and start saying people experiencing homelessness just as you might, you don't say, you know, it's just as you, just as we've learned not to call people the deaf or the, you know, the blind, we always talk about the person first. And I would, I think it would really behoove you to think about what you say in public and also look at your website, because it reflects the same kind of language. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank Alan for coming up with a really concrete proposal to address probably one of the biggest issues about a successful transition. And it highlights that there are many things that aren't covered in the Berkeley Food and Housing Project's proposal that I think, they may mention that once people get transitioned that they're going to provide some support, but I'm not sure how that's going to happen. I personally have helped two or three people who have transitioned to one person to get their phone turned on so that I could help them and provide furnishings. And that was done through the Albany Community Foundation that paid for it, their phone to be turned on for a month. Practically speaking, if you want to help people, you need to communicate with them. You need to have a way of contacting them. We need telephones for the people who are serious, so that the Berkeley Food and Housing Project can contact people and communicate with them, instead of having people standing around for hours, hoping someone's going to show up. And plus, then when the Berkeley Food and Housing Company shows up, they know that they've talked to someone that's going to do it. I do this for my business. I don't show up for an appointment unless I've confirmed it. So we're wasting a lot of time. I think there's a lot of time and energy being wasted because there isn't a good practical way of communicating. Finally, I would ask you to have a really concrete, specific, six-month performance quota. If they have not provide housing for X amount of people after six months, their contract can be terminated on our part. Giving someone, because they've described very concrete reasons why they can't get these things working for the people, and they have not provided ways to overcome those problems yet.
Thank you. Thank you.
You know, I recognize that a lot of the discussions, probably decision-making that's behind some of the items on the agenda tonight are being guided from closed session, because there's a, you know, serious litigation going on and exposure to the city, so. But I want to say is that, you know, I think a lot of people in the community, majority of the community by far, support everything the council's doing, trying to be fair. And I think the emergency shelter that you've built out on the waterfront, and the extension of the services for Berkeley Food and Housing is the appropriate thing to do. And hopefully, when the air gets cleared on the, some of the litigation, I'm sure you're doing things to protect the city's interests, there'll be more of a need for Berkeley Food and Housing to work with the people who end up, you know, living temporarily in the emergency shelter. And, you know, I think that's the way it should be, and maybe there'll be some more cooperation. I don't think, you know, I can't hold anybody responsible with the massive resistance that's going on. If people don't want to be helped, they're not going to be helped. And that's just the way it is. And I don't, I think a lot of people out in the bulb don't want to be helped, and they're hoping that, you know, nothing comes of their requirement, you know, the eventual obligation for them to move and to leave. And, but maybe when it comes more fully to mind that it's a reality, there'll be more people wanting to be helped, and then we'll make some good progress and get our value out of the money we're providing. But I do think it's a good thing to do, and I don't think there's any other option. And lastly, I just hope that this doesn't go on and on and on, and I'm glad, I'm sorry it's taking a year. It may take a year to kind of keep, support people in their new housing, but I'm hoping the city will be able to proceed with your plan in some due haste at the appropriate time, because I think it is frustrating for the community, and ultimately, it's not safe for the people to be living out in the bulb. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew Franklin with Solana Community Church. I was debating if I should say anything, because I really, really, really feel like I'm sitting in the middle of this conversation. Friends with people from the bulb first, and then being a part of the church, that Berkeley Food and Housing Project approached and said, "You're friends with people there, can you help us?" And kind of step in the middle, and so, and I've become friends with people from Berkeley Food and Housing over the time. And so, so I, this is strange, I really do feel like I'm sitting in the middle on this one. And in all fairness, I think there's been some misleading things that have been said. I don't think that even Berkeley Food and Housing Project would claim that we have done, like, the perfect job. And it's been hard, and I've watched firsthand the difficulty of finding affordable housing, and then even the discouragement of, you know, you get somebody into the house, and then they have this issue with the dog. And in all fairness, you know, they, from Berkeley Food and Housing Project, asked me if I knew anybody in the church who could help with dog training. And so, you know, they, they did some of the homework, and, you know, I found somebody who was a friend of a friend who might be able to help, and that just didn't pan out. So I think there's, you know, some of the blame that, I can probably take some of that also. And to say that, yeah, for the majority of the time, they started working with people without income, or, sorry, with some sort of income, because that seemed to be the lower hanging fruit, but in all truthfulness, there were people, a couple of the people who were most recently housed, who didn't have any form of income, so I think they broadened their approach. And all that to say, not perfect. I can't claim that our assistance from the church's end has been perfect. I personally have probably forgotten rides. I apologize, whoever that person might have been. But at the end of the day, they have been out there and built a lot of relationships, and whoever, if, even if somebody else can guarantee will do a better job, and they start over, there's a lot of trust that needs to be built from there, too.
Thank you.
Me again. Catherine Sa. So, somebody said, "The issue at the bulb is not really about homelessness." Well, I would like to suggest that maybe because these particular homeless people without homes in, well, they have homes, are organized, articulate, and cognizant of their rights, that doesn't make them any less people who are experiencing homelessness. And I think one of the problems is that you're sitting here in this council chamber and, you know, thinking of it as a problem out there, but they're people, and they are a community, and that they've come here and they've said, they've found, they've built relationships of trust with Homeless Action Center and with other groups that are helping them. And I think that's really important. Also, the other day, I was walking on Albany Beach, and I met a woman named Jill, who has spayed and neutered all their dogs, who knows all their dogs by name, and who took along, a couple of days before she had taken the Humane Society person out there, and all the dogs were well behaved, all the dogs were chained up. It was totally under control. That person, there's a resource right there already, but we don't know about it, because we're dealing with it all at a distance. And I would suggest that the fact that the people at the bulb are not readily trusting Berkeley Food and Housing Project is a good, a good reason to not continue throwing money at them, and instead to look at the people who the people there do trust, and to ask them to help, and they appear to be doing quite well at helping. And especially if the people who have been working from Berkeley Food and Housing are now, they've gone off to other jobs, and they are not going to be the people returning, how does all that trust that BHFP say they've created, how does that pan out? Because trust is about person to person. It's not about, "Oh, I trust this organization." It's about, "I trust this person, this relationship." And I think relationship is what's missing here.
Thank you.
Peggy McQuaid, Albany resident. I think, excuse me, that we all, that we all know, we all realize, the social service system is definitely broken. We got a notice at our house today that some of our income's being cut, just because the state is cutting income to people with disabilities. So there's, I mean, the system is broken, so we're trying to do the best that we can with what we have to work with. I think we do need to stay the course here, but I think that there needs to be a little more accountability, a specific accountability for Berkeley Food and Housing, not so vague in what they're, what they're saying, but performance-driven accountability. And I think the dog idea of training the dogs, that's a really good idea, and I think that's something that maybe you could include in there somehow. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak to this issue?
Edward Bennett.
Seeing no one, we'll bring it back to council. Who would like to? Is there anyone who'd like to speak?
Yeah, I get the feeling that there's a lot of people who want to do a good job and be helpful, and I'm concerned about what some of the comments are about the food and housing. And I would hope that there could be some way to work together with some of the other people and groups that are out there, and instead of, you know, instead of blaming the Berkeley Food and Housing, maybe find a way to figure out, you know, why are they out there? They wouldn't be out there if they weren't trying to, you know, work with the population that they do work with, and try to, you know, help people find housing. So that, I thought it was great that people have helped those there, but to blame the food and housing, to say, "Okay, well, you didn't do this," it doesn't seem quite fair either. It seems like there must be a way, if everybody's trying to help each other and realize that at some point, this is going to be part of a park, and so the transition is going to take longer than perhaps what we thought, but it's going to be happening. So I would hope that there'd be a little bit, well, I don't know, I can't say more cooperation, but at least some cooperation, some way of helping each other. I do feel that some of the comments need to be looked at for the food and housing to talk, for the city to talk to them and see why there are these complaints, and if there can't be something done, is it a few people, or is it a lot of people, or what would change to make things better? So anyway, I do support trying to make this transition. We didn't know how long it was going to take, and I do support going forward to do what we can, as we can, but we can't, the city cannot do it all by themselves either. And I certainly appreciate the things that people have been trying to do to help out, or what they can contribute, and I know a lot of people have. So anyway, it's, it's, we can't do everything, so I really hope that the community can step up and help, and again, if we keep some of the programs going. If the city can't afford it, then we need to have somebody fill the gap, or, from the community in some way. Maybe that's money, maybe that's time, I'm not sure yet, but we all know that it's not an easy problem. Anyway, I'm done.
Thank you. Is anyone else?
Can we have people from Berkeley Food and Housing come up and answer questions?
If you, if that's what you want. You ladies from Berkeley Food and Housing, please come up, so he can ask you some questions at this point.
Joining us is Laura Tannenbaum, our Director of Client Services, who oversees the program.
You know, I've had concerns about the dog issue from the get-go, and when we did put in our emergency shelter, we did build kennels for the dogs, provided kennels for the dogs. And I also know, we are far from the first city in California who's dealt with these issues, so there's quite a lot of expertise out there. And for example, and I'm not exactly sure where it is on the patch, but someone created a link for all the TV news videos of various homeless encampments and efforts to clear them out. In California, there was 20 or 30. And dogs are often an issue, so my question is, typically, when you talk to your peers in other cities or other programs, what happens with the dogs? How, you know, we've had some suggestions, either concrete, to get the dogs training. I'm sure someone's thought of that before, so walk me through this a little bit. How's this work?
Well, we have asked them if they...
Please go to the microphone.
We did ask if they were willing to give up their pets, and they're not. We did ask Jill about having someone that she knew help train the dogs, and she didn't have anything. So I went to the church and asked Andrew if he could ask his church members if anyone had dog training experience that we could use for the bulb people. So, you know, we have looked at different ways to handle that. They don't want to leave their dogs, so we're looking for property owners who will take the dogs, but again, we're running into, they have to be under 20 pounds, and these are bigger dogs. And so I have a pet, so I don't really want to give up my pet either, so I understand where they're coming from, so we're trying to work around it.
I think there's, there's not a magic bullet for what's to do with the dogs, or we would all know about it. There, I think there is a growing awareness of the importance of people keeping their pets with them as they transition from homelessness into housing. So I know in San Francisco, for example, some of the shelters have space for kennels, so they, people can come into the shelters with their dogs, so that, you know, that doesn't solve this problem in particular, but as you're looking forward in terms of potentially shelters or other things, it's important, dogs have to be planned for, as we think about services.
And the other concrete suggestion was from a citizen, was a concern about phones. Do most of the people on the bulb have cell phones? Is that a reliable way to communicate with people? And is there a possibility of getting them phones first? Again, so walk me through this telephone issue.
So we, actually, if I couldn't get ahold of someone if their phone was not on, I would call Amber, and Amber would track them down for me. She was very helpful. I really appreciate that. Thank you very much. So we did work with other people who have phones out there. There is a service where they can provide free phones, and we let people know about it. They didn't want to access that. A lot of people don't know about technology, so, you know, we can just put it out there, and if they want it, we'll access it for them. But Amber is very instrumental in us keeping in contact with people, so.
Did that answer that question? I think I heard a, if people needed cell phones, was that something we could help them navigate? I think the answer is yes, and if that's something that part of the budget could be spent on, we could certainly do that.
While we're on the subject of cell phones, one of the concerns that people have raised has been the, sometimes the personnel aren't reachable. Is there going to be a methodology where people can reach the caseworker immediately, or within a very short period of time? Putting a sign out that might get taken hasn't seemed to work. So there's got to be another way. Do you have an idea for that?
Well, the current case managers have specific Albany cell phones, and so they can be reached during their working hours on those phones. I would imagine going forward, we wouldn't have such specific days and times that we're trying to keep, because as people are getting more interested in housing, that pulls us away from those days and times. So cellphone, so the staff's cell phones would be the primary way to reach them.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, I think it is important to make this contract for one year. In my 30 years of experience in San Francisco, working with people who are living on the streets, there are many examples of some of the people we were working with where they had daily contact with case managers, and it would take two years before those individuals felt comfortable being in, say, a hotel room. So, you know, I think this, we've taken on an experienced organization, and I think we need regular reports about how the work is going, and we do need a year.
Yeah, I also support extending the contract for a year. I think when we started this process, we had an idea, but probably not as great idea as we have now, about how long it was going to take, and how complicated the process is in finding homes for people. I, you know, I would say there may be ad hoc organizations that have formed coalitions, et cetera, that have had some success, but whether they would have had that same success without the groundwork that Berkeley Food and Housing has done is a question in my So I'm encouraged by the success they have had. I would hope that in this next year, we can kind of examine it as it goes along and meet, you know, and have some kind of parameters to say, "Yes, it's working well," or, "No, there seems to be a need for some kind of change." I also like the idea of dog trainings, of perhaps supplying cell phones, if that makes the whole thing work better. But, you know, I think we should stay the course.
I also, I agree. I think that it's a very difficult process, and a very time-consuming process, and I think that they seem to have a multi-pronged approach, where they work with the client, and then they go out and really comb the neighborhoods for housing. And I think that's the really difficult, as difficult a part as getting the trust with the clients, because, because of some of the issues, like the dogs, which we all feel is a very important piece for people, all those of us who are pet owners know how important it is. So I think it's not an easy process, and I also trust Joanne's opinion. She was an expert in her field for many years at San Francisco General, so I'm inclined to go along with what she says. The chair will entertain a motion.
Okay, I would move approval of Resolution 2014-6 authorizing the city manager to extend the contract with the Berkeley Food and Housing to conduct outreach and engagement services to homeless in Albany for a period of one year at a cost not to exceed $76,000.
I second it. It has been moved by Councilmember Moss, seconded by Vice Mayor Wile, that we approve Resolution 2014-6 authorizing the city manager to extend the contract with Berkeley Food and Housing Project to conduct outreach and engagement services to homeless in Albany for a period of one year at a cost not to exceed $76,000, to be split between fiscal year 1314 and 1415. Will you please poll the council?
Councilmember Atkinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Barnes?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Aye, motion carries.
Presentation of survey results requested by City Council, Council salary and benefit, staff recommendation that the City Council provide staff with any further direction on desire modification of current policies.
Yes, Mayor, members of the City Council, this is a follow-up to an item that was presented on December 2nd at your meeting. Staff was directed to survey other Bay Area cities on City Council salaries and benefits. The survey focused on cities under $35,000 population, which is a benchmark for this city's council salary that's found or referenced in the government code. Data was gathered from 26 out of the 31 cities that met that benchmark. I just want to address thanks to the city clerk and, as well as Erin in HR, who helped try and gather all of that information. In addition to the survey results, we've also provided some background and analysis on why council salaries differ among cities in that group. That was sort of a question that came up. So with that, I'd be, I'm not intending to go into them. If you have any questions about the results, I'd be glad to answer.
Are there any questions of staff? Okay, seeing none, then is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this issue?
Carol O'Keefe, an Albany resident. I may begin by complimenting the authors of the report. It really does add a tremendous amount of value, I think, to your knowledge and your understanding of the issues. The key point in that report is that of the 25 responding cities in this survey that was structured of cities of similar size, Albany's the only one, the only one that has a policy to pay council members more for its health benefits than it pays its other employees. My understanding of what council originally did was in private to revise policy so that there would be consistency in benefits payments across various employment groups, and there would be reduction in city costs. Those are very reasonable objectives. They should have applied to council also. And the fact is that with them not applying to council, it was a poor decision. It's fundamentally unfair and wrong for council, which is in the position to control the policy of the city, to set it so that council members alone benefit from something. So my thanks to those council members who voluntarily reimbursed the city for the difference between what the city would pay for employees and what the council members get. But that needs to be a policy decision, not something that's left to voluntary choice. And I urge you to make that policy decision soon and to make it effective immediately. I'm sure Mr. Walker can find ways to accept money from council members who are, if there are any still, getting any more than what the staff is allowed. Similarly, I think you should pull the plug on the in lieu option. The more I think about that, the less sense it makes. I, I really can't believe that any council member with perfectly adequate health insurance would ever insist to the city, either give me money from a different pot, or you'll pay for another set of health insurance. I can't believe that would happen. I'm not entirely sure I understand why that policy was ever adopted, but I, again, urge you to remove it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Brian Parsley, Albany resident. I'm sure you're probably sick of seeing me on this one. Hopefully, this will be the last time. I think, first I have to commend staff. This is an excellent survey. I mean, this is amazing. I think that some of the glaring results of it are that within council pay, we're, we're right pretty much in, in the, in the average. The average of the cities surveyed is 334. We're $300 a month, so I think that we're right in that average, slightly less. But I think the, the most glaring is when it comes to the healthcare. Out of the 26 cities that responded, 20 offer health benefits, 25% cover all the costs, or five, I'm sorry, which is 25% of those responding, cover all the costs. 70% only cover a portion, and 1% provides zero. Albany, out of the 26 cities, is the only city that provides its council with better healthcare than its place. I want to say that one more time, really slow. Albany is the only city that has the option to have the city pay more than the city pays for its other employees. It's here in black and white now. It's not apples and oranges. It's not an election issue. It's not even about you. It is about the city council. It is not about you five. It is about the city council. Not this city council, any city council. So I, I think that you need to make this change. I think it's well overdue, and now it's in black and white, and you can't hide anymore, because it's on paper.
Thank you.
Ed Fields again. So this has been kicking around since 2010, and this is not even an action item on the agenda tonight, so it's still kicking around. I agree with everything that Carol and Brian said. I'm not, well, with one exception, maybe I haven't thought so hard about the in lieu, but her, her argument makes sense. But certainly, the issue of the council getting different and better benefits than the employees. And the main reason I'm here is because Clay Larson went home, and I want to refer you to a letter that Clay wrote. I presume you've all read it. I glanced at it once, but if I could paraphrase it in one sentence, hopefully correctly, Clay says that state law says that if the council gets better benefits than the employees, then that counts towards their salary, and that makes your salary higher than it legally can be. So if that isn't a good enough reason, I think the really good enough reasons are the ones that Carol and Brian have said. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Alan Eckert, Albany resident. I would first like to submit all of Ed, Carol's, and Brian's comments as if they're my own. And I think this really comes to a glaring that is coming right after this homelessness issue, when you're comparing the city council on way up here. Not, again, I would like to reiterate, not personally each of you, but the city council sitting above others making decisions on others, and they really need to take a step back and look at themselves and see if the council themselves are any better than the city that they're supposed to represent. And the, the city staff that work diligently and work, excuse me, I work here late hours in the evening, and don't get the same levels of benefits that the city council does for doing a much smaller amount of work time dedicated to this city. I'm sure we all do our own work outside, outside of city council and city stuff, and, and that's all, that's all great. But when it comes to official work, the city staff is working endless hours, and I think it should be the same, if not better, in many cases, benefits and compensation that the city council actually is getting.
Thank you.
Mayor and Council, this is Robert Chastey. I wasn't going to speak on this issue, but I think something really is being overlooked when I hear about the, the difference between what the staff gets as benefits and what the council gets as benefits. And to hear all the conversation today, all I hear is that you guys are way overpaid. Now, I don't know, I don't remember exactly what you get paid. Now, I looked a little bit at the staff stuff. When I had this job you guys have, it was $5 a meeting and a, and a health benefit. And I imagine now it's a few hundred dollars.
A week.
Yeah, so you get paid a few hundred dollars. When I was on the council, I put in about 20 to 25 hours a week, and when I was mayor, I put in about 40 hours a week. So, and that, and that's not paid, really. I mean, a few hundred dollars, but most of the staff, I mean, the city manager makes, what, about $150,000 a year now, or something more, and the city staff makes, you know, six figures salaries. And the council works, if you work in a 40-hour week, you're not getting anything compared to the benefits that this, that the staff get for what they do. So I think this is a tempest in a teapot. We're talking about a few dollars for a city that's got a budget roughly of $25 million when you add in capital stuff. And I don't think it's that important, but to the extent that having a better health plan would allow people to run for city council who otherwise would be precluded from doing so, we should have that health plan available to them, because we shouldn't just be all, I noticed in the survey that the people, that the cities that didn't pay much or paid nothing to their councils were the richest cities. So they have an oligarchy of very wealthy people who are the, the leaders of the city, and common people can't afford to serve. It's not a big deal. You do it, you feel it's right, but if you keep the benefit package, I think that's okay. And you're not keeping it for yourself. You're keeping it for maybe some, some guy who's a working guy, who's self-employed and would be only able to be on the council but for a benefit. So, you know, I think it's an, an okay thing, and I don't think you're overpaid by any, by any side.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak on this issue? Seeing no one, we'll bring it back to council.
Well, maybe I should start, since I'm the one who's brought this up. There's two separate issues, because I believe in 2010, there was two votes. There was the issue on whether councils should have benefits higher than those of staff, and there's the issue of the in lieu payments. And I don't think either of them is trivial, and I think the report shows that compared to our comparable cities, in external comparison, we're the only city for which the council gets more money and gets higher levels of benefits, medical benefits, than the staff. And to me, that's not acceptable. I actually get my healthcare benefits through my employer, so it's not an issue one way or the other. I'm perfectly agreeable to having people, especially, for example, working people, small business people, who can only get very expensive healthcare. I'm perfectly happy we have this benefit available. I just think that the benefit for council people should be the same as the staff level benefit. I'm not suggesting we get rid of the healthcare benefit. That's never been, I think, suggested at all. It's just that it should be comparable, as it is in every other city that we surveyed. And, you know, I guess before I continue, I need to check in with Craig about the legality issue here. If, you know, I think you probably saw Clay's letter today. Can you opine on that?
Yeah, I saw the email from Mr. Larson. Essentially, the, the argument he was making, which I, I don't agree with, was that under subdivision D of the, the Government Code section that you're operating under, that, that provides that for general law cities, the benefits for council members, including health benefits, cannot exceed the benefits offered to any group of employees. As a charter city, Albany is not subject to that. The charter provision does incorporate the salary schedule portion of that Government Code section, but it was very specific as to that subdivision. So as far as the $300 limit in state law that would apply to general law cities, that's been incorporated into Albany's charter, but the provision limiting benefits has not. So it, it's really a policy issue for the city council, whether to continue the, the benefit level that's currently being provided.
So, continuing on, thank you for that. And to me, this is not an issue, there's a distinct issue as to how much the council deserves to get paid. But I think if the council wants to pay itself more money, it needs to be upfront about it, and we need to have the public discussion and decide what the right level of payment is, and do that in an above-board way. And that, by the way, I think is difficult, because it would require an amendment to the charter, which isn't going to be easy. But that doesn't justify sort of going through the back door and giving ourselves extra money in a way that the city doesn't really understand. And let me give you my example. This, I am eligible to take an in lieu payment. Because I get my healthcare benefits from my employment, Albany does give in lieu payments. Of the 20, we surveyed 26 cities, 20 of them provide medical benefits. Half of them provide an in lieu benefit for city council. The city that has the highest in lieu benefit is, guess who? Albany, by a fairly big margin. That's, for me, in 2014, it would be $742. And that would go into a 457 plan. So if I had taken that benefit from the start, and let's say I was re-elected, and actually did this for eight years, I would walk away, in addition to my $300 salary, which I would tell peoples how much I earned, I would walk away with a 457 fund worth, depending on the rate of return, somewhere between $80,000 and $100,000. But I would just pocket, and most people in Albany would have no idea that occurred. I just don't think that's right. You know, when Pete and I first got on this council, we went to Sacramento. There was this big conference sponsored by the League of California Cities, and we heard a lot about the City of Bell, which was a nightmare of, you know, local government corruption. So it does happen, and I think we heard that, you know, city councils really have to be above-board about how they do things. And so, to me, if we want to give ourselves more money, that's a fine conversation. We need to have it. But I do not want to be, in fact, let me say one other thing. For the most part, these extra benefits that we sort of voted, that were voted in for council members in 2010, the current council members don't take advantage of. I don't think there's anyone getting in lieu benefits. There were two previous council members, I believe, who took advantage of that. I think several of the council members either don't get medical benefits, or if they get medical benefits above the level of the city, they reimburse the difference. So the fact that we don't even take the stuff that we're eligible for indicates to me that, you know, there's some sort of ethical qualms about what's going on. So personally, what I would like to see happen is have those two rulings, those two votes reversed. I would like to vote on those issues again. I would like to see a vote taken to reduce the city council benefits back to the level of the staff medical benefits, and I would like to see a vote on getting rid of in lieu payments for city council members. Now, I understand there is an economic argument for in lieu benefits, because if you offer a small amount of cash, that might provide motivation for someone not being double-covered and being a, a larger burden on your, on your city medical plan. We can have that conversation, too. I just want these conversations to be above-board and public, so that the residents of this city understand what we're doing. So I'm hoping that, I mean, I'd make the motion, we can vote on these right now. We could explore them some more. We could wait until the next fall, when, you know, typically people do, you know, they change their benefit plans, whatever. But I think the status quo is unacceptable to me ethically as a council member, and I think this needs to get changed. I thought that before I saw this report, that, and it's a great report that the staff did, but now it's kind of staring us in the face. We're different than other cities, and I don't think that there's any justification for us being different.
Okay, at this time, Chair will entertain a motion to continue the discussion of this item and the other item on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. You moved it. Did you move it?
Yeah, I said so.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Moss, seconded by Councilmember Atkinson, that we continue the meeting to complete this item and the next item on the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Is there anyone who wants to speak?
I have, I have something.
Go ahead.
Well, it's interesting. I would be interested in how many people do take the in lieu. It does seem like a lot of money compared to other cities in terms of that particular item. I see here that, that there was a, two scenarios presented in terms of the money that is used. It says the current, one would be what it would cost for the current enrollment of the city council, and it would-- And the city might save about $2,000 a year. That's about $187 a month. And if everybody took the top, you know, medical, it would be maybe $14,500 that the city would save. So in some ways, I hear what you're saying in terms of how you feel about it. I actually feel differently. And I do think that, again, I've said my points before, but all the people that have come before who have had this basically being the only benefit and also I do think that they should have the benefit if they're running for office. There is a lot that is put into it that... And again, I just don't think it's the same necessarily as the employees in terms of other kinds of benefits that they get. You keep saying it's a value judgment. Well, to me, it's a value judgment that you are basically kind of honoring the people who have done this and who've come up here. And those people who have gone before, they, you know... I don't want to take that away from somebody that would come in the future. And to me, this amount of cost, it just doesn't seem that big of a deal. The second thing is not everybody takes the most expensive. And I see that there's going to be some added types of coverage coming. So someone like me who has Medicare and doesn't cost a whole lot, sometimes I think, well, am I going to complain because I cost so little and somebody else costs two or three times as much as I do? Where's the fairness in that? I don't... I mean, what are we... Not trying to get stuff out of this. So if, in a way, it just seems to me that if people have their different needs, some people have Kaiser, some people don't, that in the end, it kind of balances out and balances out to the point where it's not costing the city that much money. So I actually don't have a problem with it. And I don't think it's a terrible thing. And I don't think it's a terrible thing if Albany's the only city that does it. Albany doesn't have the same stipend as some cities. Albany, I mean, it's just, I don't know how... It's not apples and apples to me. So I actually am fine with it in terms of people being able to get what they need medically if they end up being elected. However, I would be willing to look at the in-lug. It does seem like it's something we may not need anymore. Not many people are taking it. But I would separate those out.
Yeah, a few comments. It's interesting to see how this conversation has gone, has kind of evolved, and a lot of things have come out. You know, it started with the Social Economic Justice Committee stating that the benefits were out of line because they're... We're getting so much more than staff. The discussion last month about this. And then that sort of led to the discovery that there were some retirement, CalPERS retirement thing that we might be in line for and, you know, which I think had been overlooked by staff. I... A couple of reactions. I'm... This idea that I think Councilman Barnes brought up last time that this is as a kind of a part-time job. I... It's not any part-time job. I've had part-time jobs. This is not any part-time job that I've ever had where you get to decide on budgets of $25 million and million-dollar projects. It is something more. I, you know, plus on top of that, you're sort of in the eye of the public while making these decisions. So it's... There is... It isn't just the hours. And the hours are about 20 hours a week that I find that I'm doing in terms of studying and trying to investigate issues. You know, I personally have been one of the people paying the difference between what the Kaiser cost is and what we're getting in CalPERS. And I'm comfortable with doing that. I think that might be an okay solution as an alternative to, you know, cutting back on our medical benefits or messing with salary in some other way. But I'm still kind of up in the air in all this, so.
Well, I actually agreed with a number of the points that Mr. Chastey made. And also, I think that we haven't been hiding this process. All the things that we've discussed about the coverage and the in-lug payments have all been part of an open discussion here. I'm very interested in reconsidering the in-lug payments. I think some of the discussion that emerged would lead us to reconsider that decision that was made earlier. And I think that we should continue the kind of health benefits that we've had. The city council does not have benefits that the staff has. And so I would be for continuing that, even though this change, you know, would be affecting people who come after me.
And I have longstanding support for having, whether it was school board or city council, having the same benefits as staff. So, and those have been my votes. And I'm just basically staying with that. And I think, actually, what you just said is exactly what would happen if people pay the difference between Kaiser and that. That's... Those are the same.
Those are the same standard.
Yeah.
Now, you know, there was one other thing that I found in one of the earlier staff reports, which may be confusing the situation. The Affordable Care Act does seem to be changing the playing field here. And it's my understanding that in 2014, Blue Cross is now, or the CalPERS plan, Anthem plan, is now going to be less money than Kaiser? This is true? Blue Shield and Kaiser, right? Ah, okay.
...starting in 2014 that people have options to switch to.
And that's the one that's going to be less than...
That one is lower than Kaiser.
Than lower than Kaiser.
Whether they have a smaller network or other facilities that are not linked with, that are the same as Blue Shield.
Okay, all right. I must say, I get easily confused between Blue Shield, Blue Cross, Blue, whatever.
What would be the pleasure of the council at this point?
I would like to look at the in-lug, but I'm not voting for the other change.
Is that a motion?
Well, you said, "What's the pleasure?" Is that... So I won't make a comment, I'll make a...
I ask it that way, hoping that someone would decide to make a motion.
All right, so I move no change to the council healthcare and to reconsider the in-lug payments.
I second it. It has been...
I need some clarification as to what that motion... What are we voting on? I'm sorry, I don't understand. Reconsider is the whole day.
Not changing the in-lug?
Changing the in-lug, reconsidering the in-lug payment.
Reconsidering it.
To rescind it.
Oh, reconsidering it, okay.
To reconsider, to possibly rescind it.
I was going to, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, it has been moved by Councilmember Atkinsen, seconded by Vice Mayor Wile, that we leave the council health benefits as is and reconsider the in-lug payments.
Okay.
Discussion.
Well, if we need to reconsider, I'd suggest a level of zero. We just do away with in-lug benefits for council members. I don't see the point. We either have medical benefits someplace else and we don't need the city's plan, or we can get on the city's plan. That's pretty simple to me. I find it odd, as someone who has access to Kaiser through my employer, that because I'm lucky enough to have Kaiser through my employer, the city's also going to give me even more money. I just think it's bizarre. And so I would like to specify or maybe make a friendly amendment to this emotion, to this motion, this motion, rodeo and slip, that the proper amount of in-lug payment should be zero.
So that's what I was saying, except that I don't know... Is it on the agenda enough that we can do it tonight?
It's not agendaized as an action item. So I think the motion would be to give direction to staff to bring that back.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was trying to do.
To bring the whole thing back?
To, as... It would be the in-lug part.
Okay, so you would suggest that the motion deal mainly with health benefits and then request that staff bring back the in-lug?
Yes, if that's the council's direction, that you want to consider rescinding or modifying the in-lug benefit, that that be brought back for action at a subsequent meeting.
Okay, that's my motion.
That's the part that needs to be brought back to the next meeting.
Right.
Well, how can we...
And essentially, you'd be taking no action on the other item.
Correct.
Okay, so then another...
If we're taking no action on the other item, then why do we need a motion on it?
We're trying to talk about the in-lug section to bring it back to discuss.
Actually, her motion should have been okay because she said to reconsider. She didn't say to discuss, to...
Right.
Yeah, as I understood the motion, the way it was to give the following direction to staff. One, to take no action with respect to the changing the benefit itself, but to bring back for council action at a subsequent meeting the possible rescinding or modification of the in-lug benefit.
That makes sense.
Is that okay with...
Yeah.
All right, so then the motion is that staff, I mean, that council make no changes to the health benefits and that we request staff to bring back the item of in-lug payments at a further, at a future meeting. Okay, further discussion? Will you please poll the council?
Councilmember Atkinsen. Councilmember Barnes.
Aye.
Councilmember Moss.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wile.
Yes.
Mayor Thompson.
No. And the motion carries. Okay, next item, please.
Resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for consultant services between the City of Albany and Gillis Peninsula and architects for Public Works Service Center Design Specifications. Staff recommendation that the council adopt Resolution Number 2014-5 authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement and appropriating funds for the cost.
So given the late hour, I'll be very brief. And you can ask me questions if you have them. So this is a follow-on to the earlier action that you took to establish the design build. So what this will do is this contract will set up some specifications as to what we want the facility to be, how large it should be, how the spaces should be arranged. And that will give guidance to the design build contractor when we do that solicitation. So we're doing a little bit of pre-thinking about the design. And that pre-thinking will be brought back to you for approval before it's released in an RFP so that you have some comfort and knowledge about what it is that you're soliciting for.
Okay, are there questions of the consultant? Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this issue? Okay, seeing no one, we'll bring it back to council.
Where's the dollar figure on this? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, the what number?
The dollar figure. Is there a dollar figure attached to this?
Yes, so it's not to exceed $155,000 for the contract. And then there's also appropriation that's being made to fund it.
Were you surprised that you had only gotten two bids on this?
Well, kind of, but not really because I had calls from at least three other design firms that were interested in it. And they... Their question to me was, well, if I submit for this and I end up being the designer for this phase, can I also then submit with a design builder and being part of that team to complete the design later? And I said no because I think that's a potential conflict. And we may want to use this designer to help us critique what the developer's designer is doing. So I think what happened is that a number of those other firms that are interested decided that they would wait till the second phase and throw their hat in there because the design fee is much larger than this.
Okay.
Further comments or questions? Chair will entertain a motion.
There's one question, I'm sorry. So we are choosing between two bidders on this initial phase? Correct?
Correct.
Now, if we really like the person, they're not precluded from... We're not precluded from using them again in the final phase, are we?
Yes.
We are?
Yes. Because what we may want to do is use this GPA firm to assist us in critiquing and evaluating what the designer does in the next phase.
And then there would be a conflict of interest.
Right.
Well, just how deep is the pool out there? I mean, you're confident that if we can't use our best find from the first round, that there's going to be somebody from the second round who is... I mean, based on your experience in Emeryville, which is extensive.
Yes, definitely. There's quite a number of architectural firms out there that will be interested in this.
Okay.
Any further comments or questions? If not, the chair will entertain a motion regarding this issue.
I move that the council adopt Resolution Number 2014-5 authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement and appropriating additional funds for the project cost. Second.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It has been moved by Councilmember Atkinsen, seconded by Councilmember Moss, that we adopt Resolution 2014-5 authorizing city manager to execute the agreement and appropriating additional funds for the project cost. Further discussion? Will you please poll the council?
Councilmember Atkinsen.
Aye.
Councilmember Barnes.
Aye.
Councilmember Moss.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wile.
Yes.
Mayor Thompson.
Aye, and the motion carries. Next item?
Other business reports on meetings attended, announcements of events, future agenda items.
Is there any item a member wants to bring before the body?
Just one brief item.
Okay, go ahead.
As Governor Brown announced, we're having a drought. And I just urge people to reconsider having their lawns and to start recycling their water so that they're watering their, hopefully, native plants. California has enough drinking water for our population for one year.
Thank you for that.
And I wanted to bring up, I brought this up to Penelope and Jeff the other day when I was through. But I'm part of an organization called SPUR, which some of you may have heard of, San Francisco Planning and Urban Research. I went, they have, they hold these noon time little seminars every once in a while. The one I went to yesterday, I found, or about... When was that? Several days ago. I found really interesting. There's a bill SB 743 that's before this state assembly, which is changes to CEQA. And if they're enacted, they're going to have huge repercussions for any number of things. And I think ultimately could affect our general plan or how the general plan's put together. Essentially, it's minimizing lowest level of service, which is traffic considerations when you're considering a project, particularly for urban infill projects, say, the UC development. And trying to come up with a new matrix, perhaps a number of automobile trips that this initiates or slows down. A little wonky, but it's totally fascinating stuff. And I just wanted also to put in a word for SPUR. This is their monthly magazine, The Urbanist.
Is that available online?
Yeah, you actually can go online. If you Google SPUR, you'll find it. And it's... But they also have these...
Seminars.
You know, seminars, noon time seminars. And they have a location both in the city and in San Jose. And I think there's talk about one happening in Oakland. But very interesting stuff.
Thank you.
Sure.
The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Tom, move.
Moved by Councilmember Barnes, seconded by Councilmember Atkinsen that we adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Aye. opposed, the motion carries.